We're going to call to order to the April 11th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment, Successor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by our county clerk recorder, Jesse Salinas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of exposure to litigation. No action was taken to approve or the initiation or intervention in legal action for three matters. In two matters, the city attorney was authorized to initiate litigation to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Police Officers Association and the Police Management Association and unrepresented groups. No action was taken. And to public employee employment with regard to the city manager, no action was taken. So with that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion about issues that are raised under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that are available near the front door and turn them in to the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets the chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than two minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that simply indicates which agenda item is currently under consideration. We also, we take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on a particular agenda item, so if you're here for item 12 or 17 or any other item. Once the staff report is done, we don't take any additional cards. That's when the council discussion and public testimony has started. So if you're here for one of those items and you want to speak, we'd encourage you to do so, but just be sure to turn the cards in before the conclusion of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause anxiety and hives and nerves, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any applause or other demonstrations and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have several requests to speak under item 1A, but first we're going to hear from Jesse Salinas, the county clerk recorder assessor. Welcome, Mr. Salinas. It's at the base of the microphone itself.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin and council members. Again, Jesse Salinas, your Yolo County Clerk Recorder and Assessor. I'm with you this evening to talk with you as the registrar of voters for the county. But before I begin, I first want to give a shout out and a thank to council members Sandine and Orozco for attending the Youth Empowerment Summit back on March 24th. It was a great event, and it was wonderful to have you there and participating, so thank you very much for your involvement with that effort. I'm here today to talk to you about the Voters' Choice Act that's happening in Sacramento County. It's not happening in Yolo County. There is a pilot happening in only five counties, and Sacramento's being one of them. And I think it was important for me to come and share with the leadership in West Sacramento and the community in general about the distinction between the two. So there's elements related to the Voters' Choice Act in terms of same-day registration and election centers that they're piloting in Sacramento County that will not be here in Yolo County. We are going to continue with the traditional model for polling places here in Yolo County. So I wanted to be able to reach out to the council and to the city manager to see if we can't partner to help get that message out, so there's not a misunderstanding and we don't have any disenfranchised voters for this coming election in June and also for November. So to the extent we're able to partner, I'm looking forward to doing that with our office and the city of West Sacramento in all aspects. And if you can line up any other kind of community individuals that could help us with that, we would appreciate it on behalf of the office.
Okay, just again, what are the sorts of things that folks might be hearing about the Sacramento pilot that we would need to clarify to voters here that are not available here yet?
Sure, so... Right, so example is, in Sacramento, the Voters' Choice Act is going to be identifying what are called drop, so first of all, everybody's going to get a vote by mail in Sacramento County, and only those who have signed up to be a vote by mail participant here in Yolo County will receive them. So that's a distinction, number one. Secondly, in Sacramento County, they're going to be moving to vote centers, which are different types of models where they're going to have centers based on percentage of registered voters. So the first model is one in 50,000 registered voters, and there'll be a number of education or voting centers available throughout Sacramento County based on that. And that's for the first 10 days through five days, and in the last four to election days, you can actually see, I think it's from 10 to four, is for the election centers, and then smaller, 10,000 registered voters for smaller election centers that are going to be open from the seven to eight type of time period that you'd see for an election day. That's the model that they're doing. We're just going to have the same-day elections like we've had in the past. And the other distinction is, you can have same-day registration and kind of on-demand ballot is what they're doing over there. We don't have that technology to be able to pull that off in Yolo County, so that's one of the elements we're going to have a distinction on. But people can do registration, but they'd have to go to Woodland. So what we're trying to advocate is for people to register by May 21st, because that's the traditional deadline for this upcoming election. So you'll see a PSA that maybe we could work with the city to broadcast that, that we really want people to be registering to vote by May 21st so that we can stay with the traditional model here in Yolo County.
So it won't be possible? You could do same-day, you could do voter register, you could register to vote in Woodland after May 21st, but there won't be sites available in other cities, including here?
Correct. So the only place we could do that, that we have the technology to do that, is at the headquarters, which is located off of, over in Woodland at the admin center at 625 Court Street. We could do same-day all the way from essentially May 22nd through Election Day, but we're really encouraging people to register by May 21st to avoid that, so they don't have to travel over to Woodland to register, especially those here in West Sacramento. So the big message that we're delivering to make that distinction is, if you want to vote in this June 5th election, register to vote, and you can do that by going to, you know, registervote.ca.gov and do that online. And you can register anytime between now and May 21st to make your life much easier and do it at home and wherever it's convenient for you.
All right, well, thank you, thanks for coming. This is a really, it is a very important issue for West Sacramento in particular, because most of the news media, the largest penetration of news media in our city by far are the regional media that are based in Sacramento County. So whereas in Davis and Woodland, the Enterprise and the Democrat have relatively wide circulation, it's going to be a big challenge to get that message out in contrast to what's going to be heralded in the Bee and on television stations as a new sense of innovation. So I'm glad you're here to raise the clarion call about this, but it's going to require a pretty significant effort by us, by you, and by a lot of community organizations and partners to make sure folks in town realize that if they're hearing, oh, you know, you don't need to worry about register to vote, registering to vote, and don't worry to, you don't need to go to polling place because it's going to come in the mail automatically. I mean, those sorts of things could be really problematic in terms of depressing voter turnout here.
Absolutely. In fact, what we're seeing is, we've had the news media cover the Voters' Choice Act, and they don't make the distinction between Sacramento County and the surrounding counties. So it is already, we're seeing a problem already, and wanted to be able to just figure out a game plan to do it, and again, working in partnership with the city. So thank you for this opportunity to share this message, and we're looking forward to partnering with you to help make that message clear to your community and beyond.
Great, thanks, Mr. Salinas.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, Pat Flint.
I guess it's down, oh, there it is. Mr. Mayor, when you go around, and council members, but this is addressed to the mayor, when you go around the country selling West Sacramento as an up-and-coming innovative renaissance community on taxpayer money, be sure to explain how you disrespect our fire and police by not offering them any more than a 1% raise, which doesn't even give them pocket change. In fact, they probably have to pay the IRS more than the 1%. We have grown by 30,000 people at least since 1987, and you've not increased our police or fire department. You disrespect city employees in public when they do some presentations. You disrespected a man at the last meeting, Mr. Denton, who's been in this community for over 65 years. He's well-known in this community. He's done a lot for this community. He was 89 years old, and it took him a minute to get himself together, and I didn't appreciate the disrespect. I guess the last thing I really want to share with you is that when you go around and explain all of these wonderful things that's happening in West Sacramento, have them come and drive on our roads once in a while. They're appalling. All these things are in violation of our 06-63 resolution. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Flint. Forrest Gardens.
Hi there. Thank you, folks, for letting me come up and speak tonight. I like to represent myself as the president of the mobile home community here in West Sacramento, and I was working collaboratively with the police department, asking them, what can we do to help the youth that are in the parks? And we came up with a tutoring program. It was an awesome tutoring program, and it is free. The United Way has a four-year grant and fully funded. Talked to the school board, they're getting all of the stuff set for the kids as far as the teachers coming out, and we started an outreach program, trying to put this nebulous thing together to help the kids with their homework, with English literacy and things like that. We sent a letter to our park at West Wind Estates, and I got this really nasty letter from their attorney saying things like, "We can't have people coming in at all hours of the night and day and disturbing the peaceful enjoyment of the property." You know, it's for the kids in the park that are struggling with school, and we don't want this poverty to keep transmitting with one another. And they'll say things like, "Well, you guys can't have a tutor in the program because even though in the law book under mobile homes, it says that we can use the clubhouse for educational purposes," but the attorney says that wasn't the legislative intent. What is the legislative intent of not having a tutor come to the clubhouse to help the kids with their homework, if nothing else for education? And it's like everything that I tried to do to get these kids a better hand, it's just met with so much resistance, and it just baffles me. I just don't know why. We were trying to do a resident game day with the kids. I was like, hey, I'll go to the clubhouse, let them all come in, we'll play some board games, and it's like, we go through all these rules. Well, if they come in and they play Monopoly, well, then they can't play in the pool table and they can't go in the pool. And I'll say, well, it's not a private party. It's open to all of the kids in the park. Like, come on, why can't we use the clubhouse for its intended purpose? And they'll return my $150 deposit and say, "Your reservation has been canceled." We'll ask the police department to come out and do a neighborhood watch meeting, and we'll say, "Look, we got speeding issues. A kid was hit by a car because there's no play area in these mobile home parks for the kids to play safely." And what do they do? Naturally, they play out in the street, and we've got people that are speeding. And so it took us like a year and a half of town hall meetings, just over and over, to finally get those speed bumps in, or the caution children playing signs. We're trying to get a walkway in the front so that the kids, we have one entrance and one exit, and they're going to get mowed over at some point. We're going to have, somebody's going to get mowed over, but they won't do that either. And it's like, this body here at the city, you guys have limited resources, and we have to deal with HCD, but the only deal with health and safety, and I guess none of these concerns fall in their jurisdiction, so we just really need your help. Please, we just really need your help.
We've had a long experience trying to work with West Wind, and we really appreciate your work on continuing to try to push to offer these kinds of services. It's really critical, and to tackle the cycle of poverty and improving the quality of education. It's a huge priority in the city. You know this from the kids' home run and our efforts to try to deal with the fact that the median income in West Sacramento is just $55,000 per household. And it's, with the cost of living and the increases in housing prices and everything else, it's a challenge. And so it is, the work that you are doing, that we're trying to work together on tutoring and on youth is really critical. We also face some pretty significant organizational barriers with HCD and the legislature, the way that they have walled off mobile home parks from the ability of cities to regulate as much as we might otherwise do, as you know, having been a part of our work on the mobile home ordinance. So let's look for continued opportunities to partner, and we don't have the answer today, and we can't take it up at the council meeting, but it's definitely a common interest for us to try to improve the kinds of services that are available in every part of the city, including in the mobile home parks. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and that's why I'm running for mayor.
All right, Raymond Lloyd.
My name is Raymond Lloyd, and I'm a 15-year resident of West Sacramento, and I am here tonight to show support to the brave men and women of West Sacramento Police Department. However, there are times that I do not enunciate my words properly. That's due to my American accent. I will start by telling you I have spoken to fellow residents of West Sacramento, and I have asked the following questions. Do you think the West Sacramento Police are highly trained? They say yes. Are they highly skilled? They say yes. Are they highly experienced and show concern that officers are leaving to go to other cities? I said, are they highly compensated? What they do, they say no. Two weeks ago, I was in the city of Davis, and a police officer from Davis spoke to me and asked me if I was from Davis. I replied, "No, I live in West Sacramento." The Davis officer said, "We just hired an officer from West Sacramento." The Davis officer had asked the West Sacramento officer why he left. He was told that if he worked for Davis, it would mean a 23% increase in pay for doing the same job. This is what the officer said to me, and please excuse some of this language. I am shocked to find out that we, the officers in Davis, get 23% more for doing our jobs than the officers in West Sacramento. We do not need to deal with the shit that West Sacramento officers have to do also, and when the students go home in the summertime, we have very little to do. I believe in this world, there are good people and bad people. The good people make the world a better place, the bad people make it worse. When the bad people do bad things to the good people, the good people usually ask the police to help and resolve the problem. There are good people in Davis and good people in West Sacramento. The good people in West Sacramento deserve the same as the good people in Davis. The good people deserve a highly trained, highly skilled, very experienced, and a highly compensated police department. I also understand there is money in the budget, and the council are planning to spend on infrastructure. In talking to fellow residents, they have indicated that they wish that some of that money be allocated to the police department. I would like to thank the city council for providing me this opportunity to express concerns on behalf of residents of West Sacramento, and most of all, I would like to thank the brave men and women of West Sacramento Police Department. And lastly, and I don't know the answer to this, I had been asked by some of the residents, when was the last time a city council member did a field ride with a police officer to experience what they have to deal with daily? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Nick Barrero.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Nick Barrero. I'm the vice president of the West Sacramento Police Officers Association. I'm here tonight to read an open letter to the West Sacramento community. Dear citizens, the West Sacramento Police Officers Association would like to thank this community for your tremendous support and gratitude throughout the years. We sincerely appreciate the trust you have placed in us to keep West Sacramento safe. We are reaching out to you now because you deserve to know that the police department and the safety of the community are at risk. Police officers are leaving West Sacramento at an unprecedented rate, and the department is unable to hire new officers to replace them. Our police officers' pay is significantly lower than other comparable police departments in our area. West Sacramento police officers would need a 16.8% raise just to get to average pay for the area. After nine months of negotiating, the city of West Sacramento has offered us a 1% raise. This has caused two major problems. The first, West Sacramento police officers are going elsewhere for better pay and benefits. The second, West Sacramento is unable to attract qualified applicants to fill the vacancies. We have already lost 50% of our veteran police officers to other agencies, and another 20% of our officers have applied elsewhere. Our latest membership survey shows that over 50% of our remaining police officers are considering leaving right now. In the last two rounds of recruitment for entry-level or lateral police officers, no qualified applicants were found. As more and more officers leave, the community will suffer. There will be fewer officers on patrol, and response times to 911 calls will be slower. Officers will not have time to proactively combat issues related to homelessness, gangs, traffic, drug abuse, vehicle thefts, and burglaries. City officials are aware that our officers are being forced to leave by the lack of compensation, but they have refused to do anything to fix the problem. City officials may not think that this is critical, but the officers who protect this community know that this is a crisis. There is an easy solution. The city of West Sacramento needs to bring police officers' pay and benefits up to fair and competitive levels. This is essential in order to recruit and retain the high caliber officers the citizens of West Sacramento deserve. The men and women of the West Sacramento Police Officers Association truly enjoy working in this community, and we hope that we can continue to do so. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, the West Sacramento Police Officers Association.
Thank you, Mr. Barrero. Michael Duggins.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin, city council members. Thank you. My name is Mike Duggins. I'm the detective with the West Sacramento Police Department. I've been here about 13 years. It's hard to talk in front of my family here, but I am representing one of the officers that are looking to leave. I am actively in background with another agency, and I want to explain why I'm doing that. I never would have thought I would leave the city of West Sacramento Police Department. I love it here. I came from another department, which was considered a stepping stone department. People would go there, work three years, get experience, and go other places where there's more experience, more opportunities, or better pay. And I really firmly believe that the crisis that Nick Barrero talked about will cause the West Sacramento Police Department to become one of those stepping stone departments. You will get qualified candidates here, they will come here, get good experience in terms of law enforcement, and go other places. What you're going to run into is you're going to have a lot of inexperienced officers here that don't know the community. I'm proud to work here. I love serving the people of West Sacramento. I've enjoyed it my whole 13 years. And the reason I'm looking to go other places is for compensation and other opportunities. West Sacramento Police Department is a small place. It is a family, but in law enforcement terms, it doesn't offer a whole lot of opportunity once you've been here 10, 20, 30 years. And you are going to have officers that leave, and I am representing one of those 50%. If you do not offer us fair compensation, you will continue to see officers leave. We just had an officer that had worked here 18 years leave, and that is a huge loss for this department and this city. You lose a ton of experience, and we are having a hard time finding qualified applicants to fill those spots. So I just wanted to, I'm speaking for myself personally why I'm leaving or looking to leave, but I think I represent the other officers that are leaving, and we have a lot of officers who are looking to leave this department. And I have nothing bad to say about this department. I love the people I work with. I have been treated fairly. I've been given every opportunity I've ever wanted here. They reward hard work, but in the end, if you're not treated fairly, your family comes first, and people are struggling, having to work tons of overtime, second jobs, doing other things to make ends meet, and that's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Duchene.
Mr. Mayor, city council, many of you don't know me, but I'm Sergeant Dan Duchene. I've been with the department for 22 years. I was one of the first of two officers who the city invested in and hired and sent to the police academy. The other officer is Lieutenant Steele. When I was first hired, Chief Larry Gore set before us a high expectation. He expected Lieutenant Steele and myself to graduate number one and number two. Thankfully, through hard work, Lieutenant Steele graduated number one in the academy academically. I graduated as the academy president and as top gun in firearms. I continued this high expectation, and I placed it upon myself, my peers, and my subordinates. I did this while assigned to SWAT for 11 and a half years, arrest and control for 16 years, and as a field training officer for eight years. I also continued this as I was appointed as a representative of the city to Homeland Security with the governor's office for the port of West Sacramento, where I was mentored under Nick Concolino, and together we secured over $2 million in grants for the city. I continued this expectation as a sergeant, and I conveyed to the officers, and everyone here can attest, that I don't accept minimal standards. This has caused strife with not only me and other officers, but it's also been stated in pretty much all my evaluations. I read these evaluations. I recognized it, however, I've made an effort to change my delivery, but I ignored the critique. The reason being, the stakes and the liability in policing are much too high. We have to get it correct 100% of the time. These are the types of officers I want to work with, the ones that don't settle on minimal standards, but have a higher expectation of their profession. These officers behind me, those are the officers. Back to investment. When Chief McDonald came here, he brought about numerous community programs, one being the Slow Program. I voiced my concerns because I felt that it was pulling approximately five to six officers out of general patrol in order to address bridging the gap between the police department and the community. Chief McDonald stated that we can't just arrest our way through the problem. He was right. I'll admit it, he was right. And I've seen this firsthand, I'll cut it short. I see this firsthand...
I hope, I'm going to invite you to confirm that. I also hope, Dan, that you will, I'm personally captivated by what we're, I hope you will share with us, you know, outside of the meeting as well, the remainder, the full remainder of what you were going to, couldn't have covered.
Just in closing, I'm asking that you invest in the officers of the West Sacramento Police Department as the city did 22 years ago in Lieutenant Steele and myself, because in doing so, you're investing in the safety of the community, a place where the citizens of West Sacramento deserve a safe place to live, work, and raise their children. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dan. All right, and Deana, sorry. Deana, can you help me with your, the pronunciation of?
Kachiv.
Kachiv?
Kachiv.
Kachiv, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city members. My name is Deana Kachiv. I grew up in West Sacramento and graduated from River City High School. I'm a mom of four children. I'm a property owner here in West Sacramento and a business owner here in West Sacramento. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen because public safety is being neglected by city officials. I'm here tonight as a concerned taxpayer because my tax dollars are being spent on the feel-good pet projects that contribute nothing to the safety and quality of life for people that live here and work here and visit here, like trolley lines, pedestrian bicycle bridge over the freeway, and so-called Nestle on Cloggersburg Trail, some of the examples of the ways where a city has to finance part of these projects that would attract more homelessness and blight rather than improve the quality of life here. I found out that staffing levels of our police department have not changed at least since 1995, while the city will nearly double in size of the population. I found out that it is not uncommon to find a typical patrol shift staffed with only four officers to serve the entire community of West Sacramento. four officers to serve the entire community of West Sacramento. We're lucky if an officer meets, we're lucky if the officer makes it to the south port or the industrial area who wants a shift to conduct any sort of proactive patrols in the area. What happens when officers are busy on a call with prisoners or other duties? God forbid there's an active shooter situation on school campus. How are they going to respond to our children? West Sacramento came a long way thanks to its police force, but it's not a mere berry town any longer. It is disheartening to see that surrounding communities like Davis, Folsom, Rockland, Roseville, and El Grove with far lesser crime rates choose to make public safety their top priority and invest in their offices and police departments, while our city officials compromise on public safety. These other police officers are much better compensated with lesser workloads and safer climates. All these surrounding communities are now benefiting by hiring, as you heard, our well-trained officers. I hope that you would do the right thing and make public safety the number-one priority in West Sacramento and stop the bleeding of qualified officers leaving our police force. It puzzles me that we even have to be here today to talk about the obvious, especially in an election year of several one of you guys. Not only are we behind in adequate staffing, we're failing to retain the talent, as you have heard. I'm here to support our police department because its members deserve to be compensated and equipped as well, and we citizens deserve to live in a safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so those are all the requests we have under item 1A. So now we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications, or their reports or other communications this evening. Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County Housing Met today, the three significant items were a discussion of the federally mandated annual plan update and the capital fund five-year plan. These are both mandated by HUD. It's a five-year plan. We're midterm within that. We heard a couple of updates on that. We also heard a midterm, mid-year budget review. I also attended the air quality management district today, and the main discussion there was on AB 617, which was signed into law in 2017. And for those who know what this is, it's basically, it's to, for the air districts to look at monitoring air quality in disadvantaged communities. So the question is how the air quality management districts implement this. First of all, they are going to develop a statewide database on best available technologies, which is going to help the districts actually implement this. It will require uniform reporting of emission inventories and also allow, or increase allowable penalties. There aren't that many facilities in Yolo County that will be subject to this, but in any event, the air quality management district must implement a program to comply with this regulation. That's it.
Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the March 26 Yolo County Transportation District meeting as our alternate to that board. That night, we selected TransDev, who's our current contractor, as the contractor for fixed route and paratransit operations and maintenance. We also approved the countywide transportation capital improvement plan, which is a comprehensive plan that will serve us well into the future. And I'm not sure, but perhaps my colleague, Mr. Ledesma, who serves on that, on that as our main rep, on the transportation district, may want to comment. We also deferred pursuing a quarter-cent sales tax this year for countywide transportation projects. Earlier tonight, the Port Commission met, and we approved a development agreement with the city for the StoneLock One Development Project. And as was mentioned by the clerk, recorder, assessor, along with Councilmember Roscoe, I participated in a Yolo County Youth Empowerment Summit, and we spoke with students about safety education, environment, and human rights. The Washington Unified School District trustees also, a couple of them also participated, and River City High School was well represented that day. And finally, I'll be attending the Metro Chamber Cap-to-Cap Program next week, serving on the Flood Team, the West Sacramento. Dr. Robert White is chairing the program, and I believe Mayor Baldwin, you're serving as honorary co-chair.
Right, Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to Councilmember Sandin's report from the Youth Empowerment Summit, I just wanted to follow up. There were several students from River City High School who expressed a great deal of trepidation about the potential repeal of DACA and wanted to reiterate that sentiment because we did have a discussion last year where we talked about the future of DACA and its impacts on West Sacramento and what our response would be as a council or as a city in making sure that our residents feel protected. So I thought that the meeting actually was fantastic. It was wonderful to see many community leaders in the region coming out. Councilmember Sandin and I had extensive conversations with the young people, and I thought it was very productive. In addition, on that note, on April 20, River City High School will be having a health and career fair, so that was expressed to us as well. So wanted to invite the community to attend and make sure the word gets out. This morning, I had a meeting with the Regional Sanitation Board. We spent the majority of the meeting discussing a bid protest for the construction of the tertiary treatment facility. That bid was granted. We also received a quarterly report for the Echo Water Project from January through March of this year. The tertiary, excuse me, the tertiary treatment program project will be, is set to be completed in 2023. It is a multimillion-dollar project and one of the biggest projects we've had for the region for the purposes of ensuring that our sanitation is dealt with properly. And I'm very excited about the fact that we are moving forward with that on schedule. On the 29th of last month, I had the great opportunity of working with the West Sacramento in presenting to their annual spring break boxing camp. There were approximately 35 or so students from all varying ages, and I spoke with them about the subject of leadership. And one of, one of my favorite things to do in this community is to give back to children and help inspire their leadership. So this was a tremendous highlight for me, and I want to highlight the efforts of our department in putting forth these proactive efforts to reach out to our children, give them ideas about potential, you know, careers in public safety, and moreover, just bridge the gap between law enforcement and our youth. I know right now is a very difficult time for officers in every region, especially in the Sacramento region. So I really did feel that that program and the feeling in that room represented a lot of hope, and I think the students were really receptive. We also tended, I know Councilmember Ledesma and I attended the graduation for the students that afternoon. There were many smiling faces awards that were given out for leadership and spirit and championing, at least exhibiting the spirit of championship in many different aspects. So that was, that was excellent. The Yolo County Children's Alliance had their annual fundraiser last Friday. I served as an auctioneer for the very first time in my career, and that was very, very difficult, but it was a highly successful event, and Councilmember Ledesma and Sandin did attend in support. And finally, on April 4, both Councilmember Sandin and I attended the first responder mental health urgent care clinic opening along with Supervisor Oscar Villegas, which I believe is a fantastic amenity for our community. It serves all of Yolo County, but it's housed right here in our house in West Sacramento. So hopefully, we will be able to have the community educated about the access to a mental health clinic right around the corner here at 500 Jefferson. So you'll be hearing more about that, no doubt, but it is an excellent facility, highly qualified staff, and I hope that it'll be a new gem in the community for the purposes of reaching out to our community who needs temporary or long-term assistance mental health-wise.
Great. And the Police Department's Youth Academy is back up and running. Applications are out for the last two weeks of June, so it's another example of those kinds of programs, but all the information is available on the city's website if you click through to the Police Department. Mayor Prof. Temble Ledesma?
Thank you. I just made a couple of comments on, to follow up on Councilmember Sandin's Transportation District meeting. And just the exciting part about TransDev, I was on the selection committee for that. TransDev getting that contract, it was a very competitive bidding process that brought in two, including TransDev, another worldwide company on transportation, and another regional company. But it was, we, the real goal of this new contract, they don't come along very often with the transit district, how we run our fixed route system, but really, really able to emphasize a lot of the new needs of the city, be it microtransit, be it other forms of transportation. All of them came with really, really strong proposals of how they can trans, to really transform our transit district, and we can get more bang for the buck as taxpayers than what we do for our bus facilities. So it was a really well-done process. I thank the Transit District for running it and to the other members of the selection committee. It's an important part of our, how we run the city, and I think we got a really good deal out of it with TransDev. I also did have a meeting last Friday afternoon with, on the streetcar, Streetcar Project, meeting with Mayor Steinberg and Congresswoman Matsui and a few others that are involved in it. It really had to do with conversations around with $50 million being committed in the federal budget towards transportation projects that we have our eye on. It's just really kind of getting the forces in alignment about how to proceed at keeping that project going. There's a federal, state, and local partnership for the Streetcar Project, and I think there's a lot of agreement in how do we keep it going. It was really an effort by Congresswoman Matsui, just to know we have her support and to continue to work hard to try to make sure we get that work at the federal level to meet their deadlines and everything else they have at the Federal Transit Administration. So again, it was a really good meeting on that front. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Just a couple of reports of my own. The SECOG Strategic Planning Committee and Transportation Committee met this weekend, last week. And just one issue I want to highlight, I've raised it before, but we're getting closer now towards the details stage, which is, as we're preparing the 25-year transportation plan for the next 25 years, because of lower projections about growth and development in some respects, but also lower forecasted gas prices going forward, what, lower, lower gas prices means more driving in the modeling, and therefore, the amount of air pollution and climate change emissions is projected to go up even if we don't do anything. As a result, oh, and the State Air Board has just recently adopted a target of 19% reduction in the same time period that we're already in for greenhouse gas emissions. We had made the case at SECOG to the state that we could not possibly do more than 18%, and 18% would be a stretch, given the land use patterns and frankly, the amount of sprawl that we have in our region. They adopted the 19% and indicated that they would, that that would have an asterisk next to it that said that there would be a special program available for the Sacramento region alone in order to help with that. But the challenge now with the, with the new gas figures is that it means we have to cut back even more on both projected development and projected transportation projects. And so one of the key, so I've mentioned before that one of the exercises that we have to go through is essentially crossing out projects that are in city and county general plans and saying that they're either not going to happen, or they're not going to happen within the next 25 years. Because the region as a whole, if you add, if you just take all the cities and counties and staple them together, there's way more growth and development projected than is feasible, and there's way more transportation projects that can possibly be built. So we're now getting at that stage, and the two, I think the two projects that are likely to be in play in West Sacramento as question marks are Yarborough and River Park, in terms of whether or not they're actually foreseeable, it's foreseeable that they will be constructed within that time horizon, and therefore, that the transportation budget needs to be made. So more to come, but the initial maps are starting to come up and showing where the, where the areas of potential deferrals may be, so I want to highlight that for the council. Second, want to really acknowledge and the city manager and the director of Economic Development Housing and the city's legislative representative, Amy Brown. As the council knows, the federal tax reform legislation included the creation of a new program that a couple of senators, including Senator Cory Booker, had proposed called Opportunity Zones. And the basic concept is that you could achieve, if you're a wealthy investor that has a bunch of assets, you could invest in a private fund that would, and get some tax benefits for doing so. And that private fund then is to invest its capital in projects in quote-unquote "opportunity zones" that reflect areas that have systemic poverty or other, or where investments might break the cycle of poverty in particular. So they passed that, then asked each governor to propose a list of census tracts that would qualify as opportunity zones. And they set a minimum poverty threshold for those zones, but there could be far fewer zones than there were census tracts. The governor's office then released a draft list of what those zones would be, and based on population, they allocated five of those census tracts to Yolo County, and of those five, one track was allocated to West Sacramento, and that's the area around the port industrial area in particular, Valhalla, the eastern portion of the, I'm sorry, the far western port portion of the city. The census tract that is in the Cal and Viruskan as one of the most vulnerable tracks in the city. So one in West Sacramento, zero in Woodland, zero in Winters, zero in the county, and four in Davis. So when we saw that, we were a little surprised because a program that's designed to deal with systemic poverty and revitalization, you know, how could it be that the wealthiest city in the, in the, in the county had four of the five and that they included some of the wealthy, even within Davis, they were some of the wealthiest areas? And of course, the reason is, is because of the student population in Davis. The income levels are equivalent to poverty, even if they are students from families that are not in poverty. So we raised some concerns and some, with the methodology, because making more investments in wealthy neighborhoods in Davis isn't, wasn't going to change the economic circumstance of students. Students wouldn't become richer by the fact that North Davis Farms, for example, might have a new pool or whatever sort of enhancements that might be necessary there. And so in partnership with several of our private property owners in the city and others made a very, a very compelling case to the state. And as a result, the finalist was released, and today it was, this morning, it was approved by the federal government, and that list includes four census, four census tracts here in West Sacramento, one in Woodland, and one in Davis. And so one additional one came to Yolo County as a whole, but really a shift reflecting where the need is and where, where if you make, if you encourage private sector investments, where you could really have an impact. So those, those four census tracts include both of the, all of the, all of the urban riverfront from the Barge Canal up to Broderick, up to and including Broderick, and then also the census tracts going through the port, essentially along the West Capitol Corridor to Meadow, to Meadowdale and all the way to the western border of the city. So kudos really to the economic development team on staff for identifying the problem when they, when they first saw it, and then really for helping to prepare. And then along with Amy Brown, our legislative representative, we really pushed hard with everybody in state government to try to get that changed, and it was, it was a very significant win in terms of that accomplishment. And I have talked to the city of Davis folks, and they're not, they're not too angry about, about the change, but they recognize that that wasn't the purpose of the program in the first place. So thanks to Aaron and the city manager and the whole team for, for their efforts on that project. One other thing, May is Bike Month is coming up, and I think we're sharing it this year. I'm sharing it. The city of West Sacramento has chaired May is Bike Month more than any other city in the region, so it's kind of come home, and it will be well timed with the launch of the regional bike share project. The bike share policy steering committee met on Monday, and this is the joint powers, or the joint steering committee of the cities of Davis, Sacramento, and West Sacramento, and we're about to move forward to launch the electric bike system in all three cities with 150, with 150 electric bikes, electric assist bikes here in West Sacramento through Jump. The other important news is, and that's all funded by a grant that we received from the, from the regional funds, there's not, there's not even a local match involved. So fully funded by the regional grant. The other important news that we received on Monday at the steering committee is that Jump, the company that operates, that used to be called Social Bicycles, on Monday was acquired by Uber. So a very unexpected development, but that's the world of transportation today. And so what that means in the near term is that there may be, it will be possible when we launch the electric assist bike system, for example, this, in May, it will be possible to use and reserve and check out the bikes either with the Jump app or inside the Uber app as well. And so we're expecting additional way, additional coordination between the two systems as well. So we don't know everything that that means, but having the full, the full resources of Uber behind the project is also going to allow us to take a few more chances in places that, that might not otherwise economically support the electric bikes. We want to give it a try, and so we pushed really hard on Jump and now Uber. We want to give it a try, and so we pushed really hard on Jump and now Uber to, to commit to offering lots and lots of bikes, even in areas that they don't think will have a lot of bicyclists, which traditionally is code for lower-income neighborhoods, because you can't see the demand if you don't offer the supply. And so we're, they're committed to doing that for at least six months, while we and they, and community organizations and others help to get the word out about the availability. The one other area that we are battling with the, with Jump about is the minimum, minimum price. We're, we, we are insisting that they're not, it's $4 an hour or prorated, but Jump is proposing a $2 minimum price. And we're holding our ground, insisting that it be $1, that it be less than the cost of a bus, and for six months at least, we'll test to see whether or not it's economically viable to proceed in that way. So some, some good news and some interesting news that we don't know what it means yet in terms of the Uber acquisition, but that project is moving forward.
Does that go down?
Yes. Ms. Roscoe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one more thing that I wanted to add, that I neglected to add. May is Bike Month, but last, or this month is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we declared so at our last council meeting. I'm pleased to offer more good news. The Yolo County Children's Alliance has been awarded the office of, by the Office of Child Abuse Prevention and Child Abuse Neglect, an award called the California Prevention and Child Abuse Neglect Award. They will be provided this by the California Department of Social Services on April 19th at the state capitol. So another win for our community and for the Yolo County Children's Alliance.
Terrific. All right, if there's no other communications, we have no appointments, so we'll move from item 1C directly to item 2, which is presentation of a proclamation declaring April 8 through 14th, 2018 as National Library Week. Is there a motion on the?
So moved.
Proclamation. It's been moved by Councilmember Sandin and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma. So you know, discussion or debate, as all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So we've asked Councilmember Johannesen, who is the former president of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, to present the proclamation on the city's behalf. So if the Friends of the Library team would, would come forward to the podium with Councilmember Johannesen. Thank you.
Well, this is my great honor to be announcing this proclamation. How many of you have been, have been in the library within the last 10 years? 20 years? 30 years? All right. So for all of you youngsters who never visit a library before the internet, there's a thing called the Dewey Decimal System. And what you had to do is go to a cabinet and shuffle through cards, and then find the book on the shelf, and that's your research. Libraries have really progressed from now, now that there's internet, there's wifi that's available. It's become much more of a community asset. They were a community asset before, but, you know, so you can do your homework there, applying for a job, you can do, the search is do, do job applications. And if you just want to do self-taught, self-learning and self-enrichment, it's all there for you. And the other thing that libraries are now is, is great for folks that English is a second language. So there's a huge library of Russian language, Spanish language materials at the library. And in a lot of cases, this is the only place where kids can go to get that material. It's a lot of places where, the only place where kids can go to actually use the internet and do homework. So it's really become a fixture. You would think that libraries and books and Dewey Decimal is history, and it's going away, and it's never going to come back, but it is alive and strong, and it's through the hard work of the Friends of the Library and great librarians and great library staff that's making this work. So it's really my honor to present this for, as April 8 through 14th, as the National Library Week. And I can go through a lot of the wheres and wherefores and now therfores in this proclamation. But really, this is about honoring this facility in West Sacramento, honoring libraries, and honoring what these, these facilities have been able to do for the public, and they, how they've been able to keep, keep up with time. And it's really not possible without, well, obviously, libraries can, can support themselves sort of with the funding that they get, but it's through the efforts of the Friends of the Library to have their book sales, and they've got a station over there that really helps bring folks around and really helps them appreciate what a library is about. So it's my honor really to present this proclamation to you, and would you like to say something?
Sure. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Dana Christie, the Library Regional Manager for Yolo County and the manager of the Arthur F. Turner Community Library, and I just want to thank the, the city council and mayor and city staff for your continued support of the library. Help us keep the doors open seven days a week and provide programs in a safe place for people of all ages. And to acknowledge the Friends of the Library, whose invaluable work, hours and hours of volunteer time, dedication, and support for the staff, and the programs of the library help make it all possible. So thank you all so much for that. And one of the programs that they're supporting coming up is April 28th, which is Dia de los Niños, which is a program that celebrates education, is for all ages, there's a lot of activities, and it starts at 2:00 PM. It emphasizes education and literacy for children of all backgrounds and linguistic, cultural backgrounds, and so I hope to see you out there. If you haven't been to the library lately, please do come, and thank you so much for this. It's right across, thank you, it's right across the street. If you just go out the front door and keep walking, you'll pass a college and you'll hit it there. 1212 Merkley. Thanks.
Alex, would you like to say anything?
Oh, thanks. Real quickly, my name is Alex Hirsch, and I am the president of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library. If you don't know who we are, we are a nonprofit organization that supports and promotes our Arthur F. Turner Community Library, as one of those true cultural and community centers within West Sacramento. We serve diverse people from across the city, no matter what neighborhood, no matter what language you speak. The library staff does a wonderful job, and we do our best to support them as they put on programs and services for all of us. So if you're interested in learning more about the Friends, we will be participating in the big day of giving on May 3rd. I encourage you to go online, learn more about that, and learn more about us. Thank you.
Yeah. Perfect transition. Great transition, Alex. Thank you, and thanks to the Friends and to the team at the library and to all the community members who bring the library to life. It's not simply a place of resources, it's the people coming together that makes it so extraordinary. But Alex has provided the great segue to the next item, which is item 3, presentation of a proclamation honoring May 3rd, 2018 as the big day of giving. And so is there a motion on this proclamation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. And as one of the, one of the key regional leaders in philanthropy, and specifically in the organization and the great tremendous success of the big day of giving, happens to be our own city council member, Beverly Sandin, and so we've asked Councilmember Sandin to present the proclamation on behalf of the city.
It's, it's my honor to do this and to recognize the Sacramento Community Regional, Region Foundation, and also all the folks who, all the nonprofits that are participating in this year's big day of giving. And as Mr. Hirsch from the West Sacramento Library just mentioned, the big day of giving is on May 3rd this year. It's 24 hours from, from midnight to midnight to give to, online to over 600 region-wide nonprofits. We have 69 in Yolo County participating this year. And I just want to share a few of the West Sacramento nonprofits that you can give to. We have, we rely on the services of our nonprofit community to do so much for us. So we have West Sac Friends of the Library, we have the West Sac Historical Society, the Yolo County Children's Alliance, Empower Yolo, Shores of Hope, the Center for Land-Based Learning, River City Rowing Club, Yolo County CASA, Suicide Prevention, Meals on Wheels, and the list goes, the list goes on and on. So you really can find something that's, that you're passionate for to give to. So it's my honor to present this proclamation to Jeannie Howell, who's the Director of Nonprofit Ventures and Strategic Impact at the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. She also, in her responsibility there, she leads the big day of giving, and she is a West Sacramentoan.
Yeah.
There you go. You're welcome. If you'd like to say anything.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandin. Thank you, mayor, and the cast of the council. This was a great honor. I asked Councilmember Sandin if I could accept this one, because it's a special one to me. As the, you know, leader of big day of giving, I kind of have to be neutral, but I'm secretly rooting for West Sacramento and for Yolo County. There are close to 600 nonprofits that are participating this year. Last year, we raised 7.2 million, but we've been doing this for about five years with the help of Yolo Community Foundation and partners across the region. And we have collectively, as a region, raised over $23 million for nonprofits in our region. So it's something to be very proud about. So good luck to the West Sacramento Friends of the Library and everybody on May 3rd. And to give, just go to bigdayofgiving.org, and I hope to see everyone out in the community that day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And thanks again to Councilmember Sandin for her, her great leadership in this, in this space. I love the big day of giving in part because you get to pretend that you're, you're Bill Gates or Oprah Winfrey for just a moment. It's like, well, how am I going to distribute my $75 among 10 different organizations? And it really, or, so whatever your capacity, whatever your ability, you can contribute to one or many or every single one of the, of the nonprofits in this community and throughout the region that really matters. And it's, it's just a great opportunity. You don't have to, you don't have to go and sit through 10 hours of speeches at a reception or a banquet. You can just support great work that's happening by great, by great neighbors and friends and family in our community and in our region. So thanks so much for, for making it possible. All right. Item 4 then is presentation of a proclamation honoring the River City High School varsity girls soccer team for the best season in program history and winning the Division III CIF Sac, San Joaquin Section Championship. Is there a motion on this proclamation?
I move.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So we've asked our Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Ledesma, to present the proclamation on behalf of the city.
Does this count as community service as well for the evening here?
And the girls, come on up.
All right, this is fun for me. So we have been, at least I had been watching this team progress, and you don't know it, watching it on social media, the progression of this team this year. And it warms my heart, because as a high schooler, I can say that I'm the only council member that actually has won a Sac Joaquin Section Championship in football back in my day. So I actually have earned one of those, and also in overtime fashion, as you guys did. So as I told the coach, I talked to you last week, and in getting prepared for this, this is your moment, and you'll never forget these times. I don't forget mine ever. And so I'm glad you're up here, and we do have a lot of, a lot of wheres and thereafters proclaiming, but really, it's an amazing story that this team and this coach, and the program this coach has built at River City, one of pride, that the whole community can be very proud of. The way they've run about starting a program, making the playoffs for a couple of years straight. Last year, they lost, I think last year, to Roseville, which my old college roommate's daughter was on. So it felt very good this year that the championship game, you go through and beat a few teams two, three to one, is that right? And then you beat Armio, I think, in the semifinals, is that right? Two to one. And then you get to Roseville, and you beat them, the defending champs. They beat them one-nothing. So a tremendous run, and more importantly, a terrific, strong program where these young ladies are learning the value of teamwork, they're learning how to build the program the right way with the right values, one that was West Sacramento, we can all be proud of. They win, but they win with class, with grace, with poise, and a lot of excitement, I can see from some of the videos that were posted online, and you should be. This is one of your proudest moments you'll remember the rest of your lives. And I think you, we have a lot of young folks on this team, right?
Yeah, we have seven, seven seniors that are graduating, but majority of our starting unit is going to be returning.
They're returning, so I'm spelling, I'm spelling a dynasty brewing behind me. So it is my really, really great pleasure to, to all of you to present this proclamation from our city council to you, the coach, and to all the team. What a great season, the best in school history, that is saying something, and I wish you all the best. Enjoy it, and then get training so we can see you back here next year and give you another one of these, right? All right, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and council members for honoring us tonight, and credit these girls for, Chris said it's the right way, council members said the right way. These girls do go about their business the right way. Whenever, and we've emphasized this, when we go somewhere, we, and we leave, when we play that game, not only do we play the game the right way, we do things the right way. We go there, we, we represent West Sacramento, not only River City, but West Sacramento. And I've always told them that, and they know that, that it's bigger than just them. It's, it's bigger than the high school. It's a city. And we've really emphasized that behind us and said, they're the, we're the only high school in the city, so let's make this city proud. And so we really went out there, and when they, we're out there and playing, and this whole season, we really use that as our inner fuel. And obviously, they love to win, and they're, they're a great bunch of girls that really train hard. We've got a great coaching staff, we've got a goalkeeper coach that does amazing things, and she does amazing things with these kids on campus with their grades. We have over 3.5 GPA, girls with 4.7 GPAs on our team, Sidney Schultz. And so it's, it's an honor to coach these girls. Honestly, as much as I think they love me, I love them just as much. And it's just a really good, real good environment for these girls. And so I just wanted to say thank you again for, for having us here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, congratulations, and thanks for spending your evening with us to celebrate. It's not always like this, I promise. Thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma for the, for the enthusiastic presentation. That brings us now to the consent agenda, which is items 5 through 14. Are there any items that any member of the council wishes to remove or any item for separate question or comment? Okay, I had 14, I'm sorry, 13. No others? Okay, then we'll go to item 13, which we have one request for public comment on first, and that's by Pat Flint.
This is on item 10, is that correct?
No, 13.
13.
Yeah, we'll come back to 10 and 14 in a moment, but.
Okay. Should have been paying more attention. The home run college savings, how many students, well, I know you can't answer me, but I don't, I think there's like only 24 students that this impacts, and I thought universal preschool money was no longer available. How many universal preschools do we currently have? And so I guess it doesn't impact anything except for Measure E, but my question basically is how many are we serving, and, and is it worth doing all this work for?
All right, and then I, I don't know if it's, is it Mr. Winbach or Mr. Blumberg on this item also? So first, if you have any, if you can provide any of that background in response to the public test, questions in the public testimony? Or Ms. Tuttle is the proper person for that?
If I can, while we wait, because I had a similar program, program question, if you don't mind.
Great.
Yeah, and I might tee this up, because there is the, in the staff report, an item suggesting the program should only be available to Kidney Gardeners entering the Washington Unified School District from University of Preschool for West Sacramento-recognized preschools. And I did have a question, how many there were? I mean, how many do we currently have that would serve that? Do you have, do we know?
I thought you had answers.
I don't have answers.
I thought you were gonna.
It was the same question.
Oh, okay.
No, I just wanted, I was hoping to give staff some time to think through the question.
Okay.
We can come back to it.
All right. So I, I don't, are you, were you going to answer the specific questions that were raised? you know, subsidized preschool directly. In other cases, it provides quality upgrades for preschools that children are paying, that are attending at full cost to their parents. It also brings together the resources for the state preschools and for Head Start preschools as well. So, in some form, it's reaching the vast majority of the age-eligible children in the city. In addition to those funds, also, the Waste Management made a substantial grant to support preschool in West Sacramento as a national model two years ago, or a year and a half ago. Or was that just last year, Mr. Tuttle? Two years ago, okay. So, they've made a substantial grant recognizing that West Sacramento was a significant leader in this space and they want to support that and also to help, help young people, very young people start early in learning about recycling as part of that, but really to support the base program that's underway here in West Sacramento. So, Mr. Winbach, in terms of the, and, and, well, I think Ms. Tuttle is also finding answers to Mr. Ledesma's question. So, the main recommendation here is with respect to the structuring of the trustee account with sub-accounts as opposed to some other solution. And I get, I get the reason for the proposal and I'm supportive of it. I want, but I did want to understand, so, one of the reasons why we were, we were, why you had proposed and we had supported moving forward with the trustee account approach was the, some of the DACA and other related information and data issues that we did not want to be collecting, have in our hands. Does this in some way make that better or do we have to, make it worse and do we need to find another solution? Or how, what's the relationship to that question in terms of not moving forward with the trustee account approach?
So, when Public Finance Manager Paul Blumberg and I went to the CSA Information Summit hosted by Prosperity Now, we were able to have more candid conversations than the white papers that we had read with some program managers in different cities. And by relaxing the program features, we might be able to get greater flexibility of administering college savings account programs, some of which might still be able to protect for undocumented families. And with that still being a policy priority for council, we'll carry that forward. We only received one respondent to the RFP, Ed, I'll butcher his last name, but Cachadorian, that we were able to interact with. And what staff is really looking for is to have greater flexibility when soliciting different programmatic designs.
Okay, so, that makes sense. I just, I just really want to emphasize the point that it's a very important policy objective that this be, to the maximum extent we can achieve feasibly, that it be available and usable for folks with, without documentation or with other immigration statuses that put them at risk in the current enforcement environment, which had been a priority of the council. So, however, how we can achieve that, but remain, at least, I think for the council as a whole, this remains an important policy objective in structuring the program. The second is, in some respects, relates to the question that Mr. Mayor Protam Ledesma was asking. You know, an essential, an essential, an essential design principle of this, of the entire home run is that it, all the components reinforce one another. They are not standalone and they're not individual entitlements. They are part of an entire system where we use the research and the evidence to drop, to maximize the likelihood that a young person in our community will, will reach a good, family-supporting career through education and training and experience and all that. So, it's the whole system. It's not about access to just this one thing. And it's the reason for this provision is we're trying to say it's very important to go to a high-quality preschool and therefore, if you do that, then part of, part of the benefit of going to high-quality preschools is that you're eligible for the college savings account. And so, that's the reason for this. We've also, I know you and Justine and Director Parks and Recreation and others have been working on the question, okay, if there are other, if there are schools, preschools that young people in our community attend that aren't part of the direct up-for-West SAC network, could they, could they participate? And I know you've been working on, are there, are there ways to consider reciprocity or ways to look at that? And I would, and maybe it's getting partly to the question that Mr. Ledesma was raising. I would support continuing to do that. What I would suggest though is that, as we've done with the work that Justine Jimenez is doing with the network of preschools, is that that come with some expectations, that, you know, that it be a preschool, it would be a preschool that meets the standards, that has opted in to participate in this and is agreeing to share the necessary data for evaluation and for college savings. It's not simply that you, yes, I went to a preschool and there's no, there's no validation of it. It's part of a program and part of a system that we need to have an integrated, data integration for evaluation purposes, for grant reporting and everything else. And so, that first bullet, I think it's important to, to the extent that we can, to cast a wide net, but cast a wide net understanding that the program design requires that program elements be fully integrated.
And I think that answers, helps answer the basis for that question, which is ensuring that we do want to reach as many kids as we can and knowing the quality we're after as it, as a child progresses through, no matter where they're from. They have, A, they have an opportunity and access to that. And two is that it does work within each other. So, I think that's where my questions stem from, is that is the access there, is the, we have enough? If it's two out of 20, that doesn't really, the access to me. So, again, that's why I was asking the question.
Hi, good evening, thank you. We currently have, under our QRIS, that's the Quality Rating System that we utilize, and you may recall that the council did take an action at a previous meeting to consider both four and five quality ratings to be able to meet our program. We have 672 approximately qualified preschool spots on our last canvas of the city. We figured we needed about 750 spots, so we're about 75 short at this point, but continuing to work with, as the mayor mentioned, it's a myriad of providers, both state, private, public-private, some in-home care facilities to have them meet those quality standards in order to have a spot for all eligible four-year-olds.
Great.
Is that helpful?
Yep. All right, thank you. All right, then, with that, we'll proceed to item 10, which is consideration of Resolution 18-23 to incorporate a list of fiscal 18, 19 projects funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Ms. Flint?
I was a little confused with this item. It's, the funding is from SB 1 and it's $303,199 for the year 2017, 2018, yet we're spending $100,000 of that on a consultant. And then, last week, or the last meeting on March 21st, we hired a consultant for road repairs again. And then it states that the state street can only be funded for the design phase, but then again, in the graph, it shows the state street funded by SB 1. So, I was confused.
All right, Strambia or Medina?
One of them.
Just on the, maybe on the question of the state streets in particular. The consultant issue, we, we don't, we're a small city, we don't, we don't have the capacity to have somebody on staff that we pay 20, 12 months out of the year, every single day to do specific work like this. And so, it's very common for the smaller, the smit, the smaller cities, like almost all of us, to use consultants to do the kinds of work that you just do once every five or six years, so, or every, every other year. So, maybe you can describe the state streets issue in terms of that funding?
Yes, what this chart shows as far as the $3 million, that's not money that we are getting in this upcoming fiscal year. That just shows the construction budget that's needed to fix the project. So, we're actually getting one point, approximately $1.2 million a year from SB 1. This just shows the project list that we're submitting to the state, the valuation of the project.
So, can you help reconcile that with the, with the, so the chart says it has an SB 1 column that totals $3.3 million? Is that over a longer period of time or how does that reconcile?
Good evening. The SB 1 money for the first year, which is last year, we get only about $311,000. And the second year, it goes up to around $911,000 or something like that. And then after that, it goes up to $1.2 million. So, what all we are doing here is that state is requiring us to submit to them a list of project, potential projects that would be funded by SB 1. So, we are not trying to match exactly the dollar with the dollar. We're saying these are the four potential projects that we'll be funding with SB 1. So, the dollars may not exactly add to the 3.3 million, dollars may not exactly add to the dollars coming from the SB 1. It's just a potential project. And especially on the construction of the state streets, it's a placeholder, we won't even know exactly how much it's going to cost until we come to a design, complete the design of that project. We are thinking it'll be around $3 million.
Okay, great, thank you. And item 14 is the minutes of the March 21st meeting of the Council Successor Agency and Financing Authority, and Pat Flint?
I believe it was requested by somebody from the audience that the minutes reflect when somebody speaks from the public. And I'm asking you to honor that and to please put it in the minutes when a public person speaks to the council. Thank you.
And Laura Jamison?
Good evening. At the last city council meeting on March 21st, I pointed out that the city council meeting minutes do not identify public commenters or comments. Other than for hearings, the meeting minutes do not identify the speakers' names, nor do they provide a summary of the comments. Signed meeting minutes are a record of a meeting. This is not a record of what took place at that meeting. A member of the public should not have to watch hours of video to determine who spoke at a meeting. The city council should pull item 14 from the consent agenda and direct city staff to revise the minutes to reflect the speakers and the topics from the March 21st meeting. In case I was not clear during the previous meeting, these are my recommendations for this point forward. The city council should direct city staff to require all meeting minutes from city council meetings and other board and commission meetings to, one, include the name of the speaker, two, include a brief summary of the topic, and three, identify that person's position. Let me point out again that the city of West Sacramento is the only city in our immediate area that is not transparent in the meeting minutes. This information may not be legally required, but these cities include this information because it is the right thing to do. I feel sorry for the citizens that have spoken over the years. If this doesn't change, I feel sorry for all the folks that spoke tonight on the police department because their, their comments are not going to be recorded if this does not change. This lack of information in the meeting minutes speaks volumes about how this council values the opinions of its citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so that brings us into the consent agenda. Those are all the public comments and council comments. Consent agenda is items five through 14. There's no further questions or debate. Is there a motion?
So would.
It's been moved by Councilmember Orozco and seconded by Councilmember Johansson. So, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 15, which is a continued public hearing and consideration of Resolution 18-8, amending the book of fees for various regulatory activities, products, and services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natish Sharma with the City Finance Division. Today, we are here requesting the city council adopt Resolution 18-18, amending the book of fees to adopt charges for various regulatory activities, products, and services. Regular updates to the fees are necessary to match the cost with the revenues. There are seven fee items in this packet for update. I'll briefly describe some of the fee items included in this packet for update. The first one is transaction fees, and this is basically, we're changing the technology from transaction to convenience. And this is pursuant to a further review with the city staff and including city attorney's office, as convenience is the right word to use because of the payment method. The second fee schedule is the code enforcement fee increase, and that's a $50 increase from $250 to $300. The city's cost is $300 for a hearing officer. Then next to the waters and sewer impact fee, the cost is increasing $50 again from $150 to $250 to fully recover the cost. And this was something that was missed in the last fee update we did, so we're just correcting it. The planning commission fees, this is probably the area that you'll see some increases in the deposits, but we're, basically what we did is we looked at the cost of providing services and we tried to make sure that the deposits reflect accurately. So, we are not in the method of collecting huge accounts receivable. This will also allow us to make sure that we process the applicant's application timely and efficiently, so we're not in always collecting mode. So, that is deposit-only, any remaining money will be reimbursed to the applicant. The change in rec center fees is basically to allow people to work in groups whereby the additional cost of the person is discounted. So, it's not same cost for each, there's one trainer for like multiple people, so we're discounting for more people in that. The change in public works engineering inspection is mostly to revise the tax to clarify and make consistent the language in section A and B. This completes my report. We did present this report to the Chamber of Commerce, West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, Economic Development Advisory Commission, and I believe the EU Commission, so Parks and Rec Commission, and we, there was no major comments from them. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions and we're requesting to open the public hearing and adopt Resolution 18-18.
Are there questions for staff at this time? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. Natish, the, just a quick question. When we're looking at, at setting of fees in order to recover costs, we had a discussion at the Air Quality Management District today about, you know, there's assessment of Ag burn fees and things of that nature. And the organization's also looking at finding a way to recover costs on, you know, if a permit is such and such amount, that accounts for whatever goes in organizational-wise to produce that. So, you, you can segment permit by permit, like cost centers. The big, I think the big issue is how do you allocate time without having everybody do time sheets and saying, on this particular 10 minutes, I'm working on this project or not? So, can you just go through the methodology of how you allocate the actual employee time in these cost recovery figures?
So, basically, so if it takes an hour to process a permit, so the hourly cost will include the salaries and benefits. And then we also include the, what is called the ICAP, which is indirect cost allocation, basically the overhead. And that's based upon the cost that's incurred by the department with their own overhead staff and then the cost related to the general overhead, which includes like finance, administration, software, and IT equipment. So, we actually have a methodology we go through and then we have a pretty consistent formula applied to the employees for that.
And does that give you a good read on exactly where cost recovery is on each of these items?
Absolutely. We actually, as we moved on over the past few years, we actually been looking at that. As you know, our ICAP, which is the indirect cost allocation plan, is reviewed by the state too, so, and it gets approved last, we had an audit on that too by Department of Finance. So, we do a regular updates to that. And as cost keeps going up, majority of the costs are related to like things that we don't control, like maybe poos and stuff, but yes, we do. And we try to look for other ways to reduce costs too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Natish, I don't know if you can answer this question, perhaps it'll be more appropriate for our Director Tuttle. With respect to subsection C, the Parks and Recreation Department, rec center fees for personal trainers, my question is, do we as a city require our trainers to have, say, ACE or AFA certifications in order, or personal trainer certifications in order to deliver those services to our, our citizens?
I think I ought to defer to her.
Yes, we do require some certification, but I can't tell you the specific certification. I don't know if it's the one you referenced or not, but yeah, they are required to have certain training and education.
And CPR?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and AD. Okay, that's all I ask, thank you.
Other questions at this time? The planning commission fees, maybe you can go a little bit more into detail in there because the recommendations are for, you know, in percentage terms, you know, 500, 600% increases in the fees. And I understand you're saying they're deposits.
Yes.
Those are large numbers. Looking at the comparisons with other jurisdictions, I can see that either...
Perhaps it'll be more appropriate for our director's huddle. With respect to subsection C, the Parks and Recreation Department, rec center fees for personal trainers. My question is, do we as a city require our trainers to have, say, ACE or AFA certifications in order, or personal trainer certifications in order to deliver those services to our citizens?
I think I ought to defer to her. Yes, we do require some certification, but I can't tell you the specific certification. I don't know if it's the one you referenced or not, but yeah, they are required to have certain training and education.
And CPR?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Other questions at this time? The planning commission fees, maybe you can go a little bit more into detail in there because the recommendations are for, you know, in percentage terms, you know, 500, 600% increases in the fees. And I understand you're saying they're deposits.
Yes.
Those are large numbers. Looking at the comparisons with other jurisdictions, I can see that either, that we, either we're not spending any time doing these things compared to every other city in the region, or we've said, or we just have not adjusted these in a long time. But maybe you can describe a little bit more of the background on those.
I think I'll actually probably ask Charlene Hamilton, but this fee has not been adjusted for a long time. But the deposits have increased quite a bit is because of, we actually, actually I should just have her answer that.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yeah, it's been about five years since we've adjusted these fees. I think it was 2013. And this one frankly was left out of the December update, and I just, I frankly missed this particular schedule. Since that time, we have had PERS increases, other benefit increases. And then a couple of years ago, we had the implementation of Assembly Bill 52 with Native American consultation, which is increasing staff time, even involving some consultant time in processing the entitlements. So that too has added cost. In looking at these deposits, what we did is we went back and pulled, say, a few of the conditional use permits, a few of the tentative maps, the different ones that we've had over the years, both the ones that went fairly smoothly and a few that, you know, didn't go as smoothly that took longer, and kind of come up with an average of what we think is the average at the end of the day that an entitlement process actually costs because with planning commission fees, they're done by work order. So we can actually see what the costs are for staff time, city attorney time, and consultants. And that's how we propose these deposits. And that also provides some transparency for the customers. Even coming in, they know exactly what it is likely going to cost. And then we went and looked at what the other jurisdictions are doing for these types of entitlements to see whether or not we were still within range. And if we were coming in high all of a sudden on these proposals, then it would cause me to question our process and maybe take a look at the process and see if there is any way we could make it more efficient. So that's how we approach these.
And we all, I think, it's critical that we be competitive on fees, so we're able to, both to attract investment, but also, you know, if somebody's opening up a new, putting their life savings on the line to open a restaurant or whatever, things like this, it's one more $1,000 fee can be make or break in terms of even trying. So it is, it is important. At the same time, it's critical that the general taxpayers of the city not be subsidizing developers. And so finding the exact, I mean, we're never going to get exactly right, but trying to get that balance right, I think is really important. So appreciate the explanation. So the one question I have is in a couple of areas where I'm wondering why even with the changes, we're still so low. And they tend to be areas that have, that affect the larger, large developers as opposed to, you know, homeowners or small business owners or others. And that is in the SEQA, the full, you know, SEQA EIR, where it looks like other jurisdictions, Roseville and Sacramento are in the over 20, 20,000 or more. And we're currently charging $1,000. And under this proposal, you're proposing to go to $5,000 or $7,000, depending whether a consultant is involved. Plan development permit, the same thing, where even with your proposal, we'd still be well below other jurisdictions. And so I'm just curious, are they, are you, on those things, are we just way more efficient than them, or? With the, with the, with, when the fees are too high in their deposits, we send the money back. So it's not the end of the world necessarily for some of these large projects. But when they're too low, we, it's, as you've indicated, it can be hard to recover the actual cost. So it's important that we get it right, especially with the large, with the large development companies. So could you address that?
Yeah. So even, even at $20,000 on some of those larger entitlements, it's still not going to cover all the costs. So when we were looking at sizing the deposits, we looked at what is, what will it take for us initially to evaluate in that first 30 days, the application, and determine what consultants we would need to bring on board? And so we looked at what that initial potential 30-day cost is. Because once we determine that, say, an EIR is involved, we're going to go out and we're going to get bids, proposals from consultants to prepare those documents. And then ultimately, that gets, they, the developer then, once that is produced, the developer then has to deposit the full amount of that consultant cost. And so, and the other jurisdictions do that too. We can definitely take a look at increasing the larger applications. Say, if you want us to take a look at maybe going out 90 days on what staff costs might be to cover that, to increase the deposit for the staff time. But that, that's the explanation is, we can definitely increase it.
Well, so for tonight, I'm perfectly fine with what we have, until we get through the public hearing and hear if there are other issues. But I think, you know, looking, looking to the future, as you, as you look at this again for the next round, just to make sure that we are, we are fully recovering the cost for these large development projects in this sense. And if that's a 90-day window, if it's something different, if it's a different dollar figure or whatever, whatever that is, just to make sure that we don't have a general fund or taxpayer subsidy to the, to those, to the projects that, that's not competitive, that doesn't need to be. We're not competing with, we're nowhere near the competitive level with other regions in terms of those costs.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions at this time?
I'm sorry. Just on the issue of, I know the Economic Development Housing Commission weighed in on sort of the, looking at overall fees and making sure, not just on these one, but they, it sort of does, I know we look at them sporadically and we tear up, or we were looking at certain parts of our book of fees, but I know it is, seeing this disparity was certainly one that like, we need to make sure we do find ways to look at our overall fees to make sure we are getting compensated for the service time. Because it does, what I've learned over the years is that we have to account for your time. And if we're not, then it takes away from something else, or we don't have opportunities, we don't budget appropriately. So again, if we have opportunities to find that in the months and year going forward in terms of how we approach fees, not just these ones, but overall, I think it's, it's just really important because it kind of shows if, again, if you're telling me that maybe $20,000 doesn't even get us back to where we are, you know, we need to start addressing those things. The budget is just too thin for us to sort of not have this right sized, so.
Right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharma. Now we'll open the public hearing on item 15. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for any further questions or discussion or motion.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Perdama Desmond, seconded by Councilmember Johannesen. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Brings us to item 16, which is consideration of a workshop on proposed Downtown Streets Team program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight is a workshop to solicit council feedback and hopefully get direction on staff's recommendations regarding Downtown Streets Team. It's a program, it's a nonprofit program that was founded in 2005, based in the Bay Area. The goal, it's a unique program and model for addressing homelessness with the goal of reducing homelessness by restoring dignity and preparing homeless individuals for employment. So that's a, that's a unique type of program. Not a lot of others like it, definitely in the, in the region, but one that we've been watching, they're active in nine cities now, most recently is Sacramento. So in the report, describe what's going on there. But mainly Bay Area-based cities. They started in Palo Alto, just started a program in Santa Cruz. And I will mention, of course, Councilmember Roscoe has been actively looking at the program and brought it to us, to our attention. So staff has received a proposal from Downtown Streets. We've been coordinating with them over the last several months based on some preliminary feedback we received. We do believe it's a program that could be worthwhile here. I'm going to get into a little bit of details about how it would work here. Rachel Davidson is here from Downtown Streets. And I, my understanding is they turn it into speaker card, so be hearing from later. But would like heard more focus on the programmatic aspects of the, of the program, their experience in understanding West Sacramento and how it could work here. I'm going to focus more on the basics of the agreement. And then we have Mark Sawyer, our homeless coordinator, who has actually toured with Rachel around the city, helped them understand the issues here, and is also a believer that the program could be a good add-on to what we're doing in the overall area of homelessness in West Sacramento. So I'm going to go through the basics of the agreement, and then we'll turn it over to the council to begin the workshop. So the proposal is fairly straightforward. It'd be considered a one-year pilot program. So we say pilot because, as I'll get into the funding strategy, we do see it as something that needs to be tested here. The funding is a challenge, obviously, this would be a Measure E-funded program initially, but we understand that that's not something that we would like to, we would like to keep that money open. So we do have a funding plan that would allow us to do that, that I'll get into in a minute. It does come with an annual cost of about $230,000. Most of those dollars are going towards program costs for a full-time project manager on the Downtown Streets side. The funding would be coming from mostly the city, so $200,000, at least in this proposal, will be coming from the city along with $30,000 from other funds and donations. The program would have, the way it works is Downtown Streets goes out to, into the community, into homeless community, and identifies people who want to make a difference in their life. And it offers a program that's based around employment readiness with the main activity being community beautification. So they form teams. The teams work with the project manager. They, they kind of progress into the, into the program. Certain leaders are identified, and as Rachel will get into more details, it becomes a supplement to the city's overall streetscape maintenance and other, other types of maintenance activities in those efforts. And then in our program, if we, if we do a program here, and this is attempting to address the main concern we've heard so far, is that we don't, we don't want it to become a magnet, much like as we get into other issues regarding homelessness, whether it's housing or, or services. We don't want West Sacramento to become a base that other people from outside the region go to because we have all these good things going on. So on this particular point, Downtown Streets has agreed to a system by which the homeless coordinator would make referrals to the program. We would have a system in place where we would sort of have a way to certify that people are, for lack of a better term, homeless residents of West Sacramento and have a connection here. So we don't have a perfect system yet, but we are, we are working on a system through the intake process that would allow us to identify that and give the homeless coordinator a direct role in sort of validating that, yes, those are, those are people that are already under his case management workload, or are people that he can certify as having connection to West Sacramento. So as I mentioned, the main activity of the program is to do cleanup. It's everything from picking up trash on the street, could be getting into graffiti removal. I'm going to focus in a little bit on the areas that we're going to be looking at and the public assets that we see as opportunities for this program to sort of protect. And then the case management aspect of it is also really unique. It's not just employment readiness, but they also do the types of navigation services that our homeless coordinator is actually already involved in, but doesn't have endless resources to, to take care of every client. But things like housing navigation, navigating social services through the county, and mainly employment assistance. This is all about getting people, again, through re-entering society and being used to doing the basics, like showing up to work on time and, and taking care of the basic of things that go with having a job. This program also has a strong emphasis on unemployment readiness. Data is also something that, again, this is an area where we're learning, where we'll have to work more on Downtown Streets on exactly the type of data that they do collect and things where gaps might be that we would like to see more of. They are open to adjusting their system to tailor it to whatever outcomes that we're looking for in collecting data around that. But they do use, I'm already blanking on the acronym, but HMIS is a homeless management information systems program. So they are in the data collection arena for, for measuring their outcomes. So there is a strong component for that. They also do these surveys that are really meant to measure the sentiment of their participants to see more on a qualitative basis, the outcomes that they're achieving, things like housing, access, able, ability to secure a job, and also reduction of recidivism and interactions with law enforcement. That's something that they also measure through these surveys as they go forward in the program. So also, and then also the basic information about the actual trash and activities that the, the team is involved in cleaning up. So in terms of the funding strategy I mentioned earlier, we would be looking at this as a Measure E implementation program, at least in the first year, potentially the second year. But longer term, staff is working on a strategy that would pair this program with a P-Bid, Property and Business Improvement District. So P-Bids are very common in California. There's some basic information in the staff report about how they work. But the, the general idea here is that, we've talked for a long time about the need for a P-Bid in the West Capitol Avenue and Riverfront area. We see this program as a great opportunity to initiate that discussion. Downtown Streets and other communities is typically funded through P-Bids and has the strongest support from the business community. Staff sees this as absolutely essential that in order for this program to work and sustain itself, the business community and property owners in the affected area are going to need to buy in. We hope that through spending a year or two and funding it initially through Measure E would accomplish that. And if we're successful in forming the P-Bid, the idea is the city is a major property owner in that area. We own about roughly 20% of the property right now, give or take the area that we're looking at. The idea is that we would, we would use Measure E funds, a reduced amount of Measure E funds, to pay our share of the assessment. So that way, our Measure E dollars are still going to a homeless reduction activity, but also leveraging potentially by a ratio of five to one, private funds through the P-Bid assessments. So the focus areas, as I mentioned, we're mainly looking at the Riverfront, the area in red, sorry, it's a little hard to see. I would describe this as the, as the largest extent we would be looking at for the P-Bid and the service area that would, would be under Downtown Streets. So I wanted to hone in, there are about 10 main road corridors that would be our key focus areas, just going from west to east, Sycamore Avenue corridor, that would also include the Sycamore Trail. I would say all the way up to the end of it on the north and south. And even eventually, once we do the overpass, it could be active there too in terms of cleanup. Obviously, the West Capitol Corridor is the main focus area. That's where most of the impacts are. That's really what we're trying to do is, is tie the areas that Downtown Streets will be focused on and the P-Bid to the areas that have the greatest impact of homelessness in our, in our core areas. So the Jefferson Boulevard, West Capitol intersection, Merkley Avenue, and then as you get closer to the Riverfront, Tower Bridge Gateway, all the way to the Tower Bridge, and then in the Bridge District, mainly focusing on Riverfront Street and the Riverwalk Trail, but also in Washington, Fifth and Third Street are the main north-south corridors. But we're also making a lot of investment in that area, in things like public art and streetscape, so we want to make sure we're taking care of it. And so on C Street, E Street, and F Street, there would be activity there as well. And I did want to take a minute just to focus on those public assets. Just adding up this list, there are over 20 public assets. The city has had a direct hand in funding, and these are things that we really want to make sure are taken care of and are absolutely impacted by the incidence of homelessness. We already see it on a couple of these right now. So these are the areas I would see that Downtown Streets would be active in and focusing their, their cleanup efforts and potentially graffiti removal. Broke it down by area here, but I already mentioned the Sycamore Trail. There are a number of vacant city properties in these areas that would be good candidates for regular check-ins on the, on the Streets Team. The Civic Center, obviously, we want to make sure the transit corridor, I'm sorry, the Transit Center is an inviting place and is clean and, and taken care of, so that would be another area of focus. Our recent parking lots, the one in the Bridge District, but also the one that we're building just down the street at Grand Gateway, is another opportunity site. And then I already mentioned in Washington, I just use the example of on E Street, we're putting in the sidewalk poem. We want to make sure that stays in good shape, and Downtown Streets could have a hand in making sure that happens. And then, of course, the Riverwalk Park is a, is a huge public asset that has a pretty heavy impact from homelessness that would also get the attention of this team. So that concludes my part of the presentation. I was hoping we would have some time to hear from Downtown Streets, so you can hear, ask questions about their program operations. And like I said, Mark Sawyer is here to address any questions that you may have about how this program could tie into our overall homeless coordination effort. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. Roscoe, do you want to lead off the conversation?
Sure. I wanted to ask a question before I did so.
Sure.
Aaron, in that last slide where you showed in the red area, is that the area that would, where the cleanup efforts would be focused, or is that where the P-Bid would be? Or is it both?
I'd say it's a variation of both. I think the, the larger of the areas, I think, would be how we would see Downtown Streets, areas that we would ask them to focus on, and we would say maybe there's emphasis areas within that. I use that example for the P-Bid, please, for the P-Bid, because I, as I mentioned, I would describe that as the largest extent of the P-Bid. We don't need it to be that big in terms of the initial analysis we've done about how much money we need to generate. But I would say for the property owners in those areas, if the P-Bid's main purpose is maintenance and security, I think it's safe to say that the, the areas we've covered there, there should be a strong interest from property owners and businesses in those areas. But it could be smaller and still work. work.
But it wouldn't preclude a team from going out on Sacramento Avenue and picking up trash or near IKEA Court?
I see what you mean. So yes, the part of the idea that we're looking at is the Downtown Streets team could actually go into camps, into recently vacated camps and help with the cleanup. That's what they do in other places. Given some of the remote locations of those, there is potentially an added aspect of transportation cost that would need to be addressed. And if we, depending on your direction, that is something we would like to include, but we just haven't had the detailed discussion with Downtown Streets to see what that, the logistics of that and what additional costs might be incurred by having them go out to Southport or IKEA Court, for example.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation, Aaron. Should I respond before the remainder of the presentation?
Are you done with the presentation?
I'm done with staff's presentation at this point, yes.
Because I couldn't refrain from responding until, if we wanted to hear from Rachel Davidson from the downtown.
Sure. Rachel actually did not submit a card, so.
There was another representative from Downtown Streets, I believe?
Chelsea?
Hi.
Okay.
So you can bring Rachel.
I would like to bring Rachel, that's okay. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rachel Davidson, and I'm project manager for Downtown Streets team in Sacramento. I apologize for not submitting a card. But I'm really excited to be here tonight and to be able to discuss DST and West Sacramento with you all. As Aaron mentioned, I had the opportunity to spend a few hours with Mark a couple of weeks ago. And after spending some time with him, I left even more confident that DST could fill an integral gap in services here in West Sacramento. In the last 13 years, we have worked with 755 folks who have moved into long-term and gainful employment, over 820 individuals who have moved into stable housing, and removed 5.2 million gallons of debris, which we're pretty excited about as well. In Sacramento, our team removes an average of 3,500 gallons of debris per week. So that kind of gives you an idea of some of our environmental impact that we're able to create. But greater than all of that, as Aaron mentioned as well, we do these surveys with our team members every year to really get a sense of how the program is affecting them and if we're doing our job correctly. And our most exciting metric that we get to announce is that 96% of our team members revealed that they have a greater sense of pride since joining the team. And that's where change begins. That's where the path to recovery begins. Our teams are comprised, not only of folks who are currently experiencing homelessness and living unsheltered, but also of folks who are at risk of becoming homeless, living kind of on that proverbial edge, and also folks who have recently exited homelessness and moved into housing but still find themselves needing support to not only remain housed and prevent relapse back into homelessness, but to continue their path of recovery in reintegrating into the community. After about a year and a half extensive study, the League of California Cities last month released the results of their study and named five best practices in the state of California for ending homelessness, and we were thrilled to be one of those practices. It costs the community an average of $83,000 to support an individual who is living persistently homeless. Alternatively, it costs Downtown Streets team an average of $14,600 to help that same individual move into stable, gainful employment and housing. So thank you very much for having us tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
For Aaron, though. For Aaron, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Aaron, Councilmember Johansson for a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Aaron, for the presentation. A couple of questions. So the, you know, one of the components of the Measure E funding for homelessness was to find housing for people eventually. I mean, that's the goal, is if it's a housing-first model. So I'm glad to see that, you know, that's one of the goals and outcomes of this in order to get that. And also the interdiction of folks that are on the edge, to be able to keep them from becoming homeless, which is another, we had a rapid rehousing program a while back, that the focus was on that, is to use landlord assistance or legal assistance to keep folks from becoming homeless in the beginning. So I think that's a great thing. The, I think something like this, when we're looking at this for the first year, I mean, I'm totally supportive of this, to give this a shot. But when we're looking at it more as a programmatic event over a number of years, we have to look at more stable funding. I don't know, the reliance on a P-Bid, we, I was involved, I think, with that maybe 12 years ago or something like that. Of course, the property ownership is different in this area, and it can be tough to get the votes to do that. And if the city, you know, on West Capitol Avenue, the city obviously controls a lot of the property there, but once you start branching out into Washington, the vote becomes a little more challenging. And most of these P-Bids I've seen have been dealing with landscape, you know, visual improvements, enhanced cleaning, that type of thing, but also security, which is, I think, really what you're talking about here. So that would be my concern is just, you know, if we're looking at some type of stable funding, to not entirely rely on the P-Bid model because the vote may not be there to get that. But if we can find a way to do this, I think it looks like it's a great program to pursue.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I find the mission of this organization truly inspiring, so I'm excited that we're having the ability to have the conversation. I do have some questions, just so I can kind of get peace of mind that there may not be some unintended consequences or other impacts. One, and I'm not sure, hopefully you can answer this, but maybe Mr. Sawyer, I am wondering about the impacts on our homeless coordinator with regard to adding this kind of referral. I know that there's already referrals going on, but it's kind of, is there other responsibilities or other activities? So that's, I just have a series of questions that may be able to ask them all.
I would like to have him answer that one, but let's go ahead.
And then, and then I'm trying to recall our daily, the daily count, like our annual count is about?
Yeah, our pick count was last done, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, but it was 85. But I wouldn't even say anecdotally, I think the homeless coordinator's involvement in the field, according to him, he's fairly confident that number has been very stable.
Okay. So if it's 85, and then the program is projected to hit 60, that's almost, that's almost a lot. That's almost our whole population here. Somehow, that's what is outlined. So I just, I just want to make sure we're going in completely eyes wide open with expectations of the outcomes. So just, I'm just trying to think about if it's 85 and the expectation is 60 West Sacramento folks are involved. That's, again, it's like, I'm not doing the math right. It's like 75% or 80 or something.
I believe that number is citing the potential number of people that could be involved in the program, because obviously not everyone who's contacted is going to be the right participant. Some people may fall out. So Rachel maybe can address that, but I believe that's what that number refers to.
Okay.
The team itself, the core team, is 25 people, 15 to 25 people, so.
Okay. It still, it just seems like, to me, it seems pretty optimistic, but I want to be optimistic, but yeah, okay.
But actually, I would like Mark to comment on the point about his view of the current homeless population and the appropriateness of that population to be successful in this program, so.
Great. And then I'm just going to list all the questions and we'll get through them. The other one is, does the work, does it affect current staff doing, let's say, cleanup work? Or are there any issues that we need to have regarding the current worker? Is it simply an add-on, which it seems like it would be, like we're getting kind of more of a benefit, and then folks doing the work there can focus perhaps on something else? Because that seems like additional coordination to me.
That is the intent.
Okay, okay.
But that would obviously require coordination with, our Parks Department has been, again, very effective, I didn't mention this earlier, but very effective in maintaining the impact of homelessness. So the idea here is that, as that effort continues, Downtown Streets is more doing the day-to-day, you know, keeping things from happening. So out on West Capitol, we don't have crews that are out there every day sweeping the street. So this would be an add-on in that sense. But it could also be a supplement in the sense that if they're doing a camp cleanup and it makes sense, and again, this is where the coordination will have to happen, it might make sense to have Downtown Streets supplement the work that our strike team, we call it strike team with Parks and Public Works and the homeless coordinator, the work they're doing.
Okay. And my final question, then they can all be answered, is the, in the proposal, it says the project will secure 10 jobs of at least 90 days for participants. Furthermore, eight will be placed in permanent housing, which is, which is great. I just, I'd like to be able to hold the group to that. So I don't know how that's possible with all the, I don't know, there's lots of variables that go on in folks' lives, but that would be a great outcome.
Yeah, and we do believe that is an achievable outcome. And that, we say that based on our experience, and really, this is Mark's experience in helping people find housing and kind of the ongoing work, as a supplement to that, we do believe those numbers are achievable. And it also coordinates with what Downtown Streets' experience has been in other communities.
Great.
So, yes.
Okay. So now my answer, sorry. So one is, I think, for Mr. Sawyer, just the
workload.
Work, kind of workload, impacts, the possibilities?
Yeah, I don't think that it would add too much of a stress on me. I'm already having my weekly walk-in appointments where I'm screening people for various services in the county to refer them to, whether it be, you know, the homeless shelter, Fourth and Hope, whatever it is. And so if I was just adding this, to screen to see if they would be a candidate, and doing a one-sheet referral, whatever Downtown Street Team decides to do, I don't think that would be difficult at all. Plus, I already have rapport with many of the homeless in this community. And so I would kind of, if this came to fruition, I would kind of have an idea who would be a good candidate for this and who would not. So I don't think it would be a stress at all. It actually would probably help me out because there would be more case managers, more people to, you know, help me with some of the workload. So it'd probably be the opposite.
And unlike this week, you wouldn't have to attend, you wouldn't have to spend time attending an award ceremony to be named Manager of the Year either, right? So you have a little time freed up.
Okay.
Mayor President Ladesma?
Thank you. And first, I'll acknowledge Councilmember Roscoe for bringing this. She's been championing this for some time, for us to look at as an alternative way of addressing some of the homeless issues that we, that are visible to us. And it is, it's opened my eyes a little bit, kind of reviewing the materials and listening for the past few months as we've, this has been brought forward, on how we approach it. You know, we've, I think we've done as a city, a pretty, we have a pretty broad toolset that we utilize in terms of how we've addressed homeless. And so to me, and we have lots of great partners, and we heard from our Manager of the Year sort of how, kind of, how this works and how we're already feeding off to the county services that are out there. So I'm very interested in this, and from the feel-good thing that it is, right, getting people out there and helping their, maybe turning the corner for them on their self-esteem and turning the corner for them, which we know can be an issue. But I am interested in a couple more aspects in terms of how it affects what Measure E was all about, or at least one of the components was, was demonstrating, reducing the impacts of homelessness. That was one of the key foundational parts of E, in addition to, you know, having funds for our roads and whatever, public safety and kids' home run and all the things we've asked for. But this one, the measurable part of it, is what I'm going to kind of dig into a little bit and how we can do that. And Councilmember Sandin just kind of hit on it, because it does articulate sort of what it's going to strive for. And what I'm worried about is the placing of, so we have lots of partners now at the county that we can place them to. But I worry, are we going to be able, are we going to be able to track the metrics? Does Downtown, the Downtown Team come back to us with the metrics of each one of those people? Is it our team that's doing the metrics? Two, is around the resources? How do we connect? Have we started to connect those folks to the resources we have at the county, either at the new mental health facility? Kind of how does that all get plugged in? I'm kind of curious to kind of hear that, so that we can see the outcomes, much like we did in Bridge to Housing. We tracked those folks over a long period of time, I think, and we had some success for that, right? We're recognized in the state as well as a best practice. So I'm trying to figure out how we're going to be able to track this, to know that the investment, I have no, you know, the investment for Measure E is appropriate because this is seed money for a program that is aimed at one of its key goals. But we also want to make sure we have the mechanisms in place to measure its effectiveness.
Yes. So if I could comment on that, and it also ties back to Councilmember Johansson's comment about this program. So again, Measure E, one of the aims was reducing incidents and impact on the community of homelessness. We think this program has the ability to do both. In terms of tracking the data, my understanding is Downtown Streets, through their HMIS software, they both collect the data, but they also collect it in a way that can be coordinated with the county's HMS, HMIS system. Now, we would have the added component, since Mark Sawyer is making the, our homeless coordinator is making the referrals, and also, as he mentioned, he has the, kind of the built-in knowledge and relationship with the, with his case management clients that would be participants in the program. We have that added layer of accountability where we can say, this is what Downtown Streets is reporting, is this what we're seeing? And so, so I think, hopefully that answers the question about who's collecting the data, but in terms of who's verifying that data, I think we do have a good.
That's probably more the point I'm addressing, because what I don't want it to become is, you know, a nonprofit that does its work, says a few things, and maybe we can't verify, we can't see, you know, and we can talk to partners, and what we hear a year later, we never really talk to them. And it sounds like it's pretty connected into the county services and our own.
Yeah, and we're still, you know, we're still sorting out the details on how the program would roll out and overall management, but we do see a role of our department having kind of oversight of the program. So not to burden a specific department about the coordination, we hope it runs fairly seamlessly. Once Downtown Streets is dialed in and they're clear on where they're going, that's, that's working on its own. We're more coordinating the data collection and reporting and verifying it with Mark Sawyer, and he's making the referrals. So I think it has good potential to work and get good data and good outcomes out of it that we can verify. And in doing so, and going back to Councilmember Johansson's comment, as we figure out other funding sources, P-Bid hopefully being the one, it allows us to use that precious resource of Measure E dollars to do more direct impact programs that deal with both housing and other community impacts.
Right. And I appreciate the discussion, because that was the other area that I don't want to focus on too much, around the P-Bid. I think probably now is a good opportunity to work, because it's always a bit of a chicken or the egg thing, like, you know, do people want to, for the businesses are there, do they want to invest further into their property or into their business, before the services are there, after the, right? So I think this is an opportunity to get the services out there, get it visible that might spur more.
And get buy-in.
Yeah, get buy-in, get more investment in the business communities, knowing that the P-Bid has maybe been set up, that can, and that we provide the seed funding, so they know it's tangible, you know, efforts to reduce impacts. And so you might get more. I know that in the map you had stretched all the way up north to the New Washington District where there's been lots, there is lots of investment, you know, new pizza restaurant, new ice cream, and new stone vintage guitar place. Those are all going in, and I'm sure they're going to feel the impacts homelessness, but this, this might be a real opportunity for them to feel it's been worth it. That'll drive more investment around Washington South, towards West Capitol and wherever else. So I think it's a real opportunity to show the business owners that, from our cities, we're invested in it too, will start it up and then get their buy-in, and then hopefully, as we show some success, they'll get motivated and we'll push them a little bit, of course, but to get the P-Bid set up. And I think that's, because we're going to need that anyway. We've always anticipated that as a mechanism for other ways to fund safety and cleanliness around those streets. So I think it's a great. My question is, it's a fairly large area on the P-Bid that you kind of, the map you had?
Again, a maximum extent of the potential.
Yeah, and I think it could work. I just, you know, I just, I like with the map, I just kind of, that's, and what I don't, what I'm cautious of, I'm agreeable, first of all, to this seed money to get this going, if we can get all the right metrics and all the, you can do all the things to get the Ts crossed and Is dotted. But, you know, I think as the P-Bid shows up, I just don't want it to be the first burden they have that absorbs every other. want it to be the first burden they have that absorbs every other, I don't know what kind of capacity that size, what kind of revenues that kind of P-Bid would generate.
It, it, and it really is more about tying it to the dollars we're trying to achieve, and then finding the best, the, the most benefit for the properties in that area.
Yeah.
So I think what we're going to find more, most realistically, is that it may not make sense in that whole area, but it, but there's a very strong case to make for the properties along the corridor. And we have verified through our early work that a much more pared down to just the corridor type of P-Bid would generate enough funding to provide for this program. Then it just becomes a matter of support, is the support there, in sizing the district accordingly around that.
Outside of the, this conversations we've been having, we, any initial conversations with the chamber?
Yes. In, in terms of the P-Bid, yes, there's-
In terms of this-
Very, very initial, and, and they are aware of the Downtown Streets program. Conversations, yes. Also, interest in the P-Bid has been expressed, but clearly they're a partner that will need to be engaged in, in both as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
First, I also want to thank Councilmember Orozco, who has been an unrelenting advocate of, of taking a look at this, this program from, I think, the moment, within three minutes of being sworn in, as a member of the council, so, and I think has won over a lot of hearts and minds. In an area where there's, there's skepticism about just initiatives, because this is a tough area. Homelessness is just a very challenging public policy area in terms of, of, of making real progress. And so I really, I salute your, your, your leadership and tenacity on, on bringing this forward. And I am also supportive of, of moving ahead with this as a Measure E investment, and as a test. And, and I, and I'm confident that has a lot of promise, and particularly what, what Mr. Sawyer has said as well. Now, having said that, I have a couple of, like, hard-nosed questions, and they'll get harder. So the first is, are, is, is the, the data systems that, that Downtown Streets use, are they compatible with Outreach Grid, or, or other? Are you about to tell me we're not using Outreach Grid now, or?
Yes.
So, we actually spent the last two years building our own clarity system. As we're in seven counties right now, we found it necessary to have a system in-house where we could track all of our data and metrics, but also be able to bridge over to HMIS systems in the other counties that we're in, really to save our case managers' time in double entry. And so on our backend, we use a clarity system that's just like HMIS in most counties, where clarity is the provider for HMIS. And so here in West Sacramento, we would track all of our deliverables through the HMIS system, both here through the county, and then also through our own, in terms of bridging that over into, what was the program that you mentioned?
Outreach Grid.
Outreach Grid. That, to be very honest with you, would be a question for our IT person.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'd be happy to find out.
When it comes back, I would very, I'm very much interested, I mean, that's an innovation that we incubated here in the city, and I think to the extent more cities might be interested in Downtown Streets, and fewer county, and, and as opposed to only counties, the kinds of things that Outreach Grid does, and has the potential to do, if it's built out right with the right set of partners, are promising. So I, I, I hope to hear back when, when it comes, when, if, assuming the council says yes, and it sounds, if I'm counting right, that it, that it's likely to, that when the agreement comes back, we'll, we'll have some information about what's possible. It's, it's clear, it's not plug-and-play at the moment, but whether or not there are ways to port the data that don't require a human being in the field to enter everything twice. Okay, great.
Absolutely.
Thanks. The second is then, and a lot, I had a bunch of questions, but Councilmember Sandin asked almost all of them, and Mr. Ledesma, most of the rest. So it's, the, part of the commitment here is that this relates, is that individuals would be referred through Mark?
Right.
And I just want to be, be certain that that's the totality of the, of who's being served through the program, and that it's not that Mark's referrals have first priority, but that Mark, but it is fully and exclusively individuals that are being referred through, through the homeless coordinator.
So we, we can definitely take that direction forward. What I, what I can say is, the discussions that have been had so far are that, that's the aim. Downtown Streets has agreed to a system where they would not be reimbursed through the city's funds for individuals who could not be verified. So in that sense, there's no incentive for them to go outside. I guess the only scenario would be if they couldn't fill the team for some reason. We don't, we don't think that's a likely scenario, but we can definitely work on strengthening that, that system based on that.
Yeah, I think it's really critical. I mean, I know, it, so I put it in my hard-nosed list. It's, it's important. I mean, I know folks in this sphere say, oh, there's no such thing as attract, as becoming a magnet. It's the same folks who also say, oh my God, gentrification's happening, and it's a, it's a magnet. People move and respond to geographic and economic incentives. That's a fact of life, whether it's in gentrification, or in, in social services, and public services, and shelter, and everything else. It's just, it's the truth. And as we're doing an experiment, Measure E's funds are specifically and exclusively for reducing the incidence of homelessness in West Sacramento, and reducing the impacts of, on the community in West Sacramento. And, and so we need to stay true to that. And if there, if, you know, if we, if we get to the point where there just aren't enough homeless individuals in the city to staff up the teams, I will gladly invite you back to council to tell us that, and we can waive whatever we need to waive in order to proceed if we get to that situation. But what I don't want to see is any sort of recruitment, or billboards, or advertisements across the river for folks to come and work in the, in the Downtown Streets team here. That's what we, that's not what this is, that's not what this pilot is about. And I think it's important for the trust in the community that we, that we stay, that we stay strict on that during the, at least during the test phase, to see how, how that can work. So I appreciate, appreciate your willingness to, to work that, that through at this stage. And, and the data sharing piece that we just kind of talked about, but, but it is really important that, that in addition to the, like, the, the high result data, that as much data gets passed back and forth, not just data that shows, you know, the performance indicators, but they did, the data that can be useful to Mark and to other departments in the city to appropriately serve the needs of the homeless population, and also to respond to community impact issues. And so data sharing, just as we're insisting with VIA on transportation and other partners, that we have a robust system of sharing data to improve and maximize on our service. Then the last is on the outcome measures, and this will be the hardest known, which is that because the Measure E dollars are for those two specific purposes, and really only those purposes. And as a city government, those are, are principal functions. And so it is, it is a important social objective that we all share as individuals, as community members, that, you know, issues around a sense of well-being, self-esteem, some of the indicators of the quality of life, those are, those are important. Those are not Measure E. Measure E is the incidence of homelessness and the community impacts of homelessness. And so what, what, what I want to be sure that we avoid is, is that we get a, we get a report back that has 27 performance indicators buried in the middle, or whether homelessness has gone up or down, and whether or not there are fewer complaints about, you know, camps or attacks, or whatever, right? The Measure E-related outcomes need to be specifically called, those are the principal outcomes. In the, in the body of the report that comes back to us, that lists all the other benefits that might be useful for getting other funds, I would definitely encourage that to happen. But around, but around the Measure E funds, which is what, what's paying for this, we need to stay specifically and exclusively on those pieces. It's the same thing in the other Measure E programs. You know, we hope that, that, that four-year-olds will really enjoy preschool, but one of our metrics is not the level of satisfaction by four-year-olds, or their parents in preschool. That's not what we're trying to accomplish in this, in that program, that's what the funds are for. And I, you know, working in the nonprofit and in the government sector, too often, we, we, we look at the other metrics that aren't the, the key performance indicators. And the key performance indicators are, did we reduce the number of, of individuals in home, in homelessness in our community, and/or did we reduce the impact on the community? We need to keep those front and center. The other metrics will be important for other potential funding sources, but for Measure E, we need to do that. It turns out that, that at least the second one, reducing community impacts, is also going to be the most likely key performance indicator for anybody signing up for a P-Bid. So it's all, and, and just, in, in the same way that many of the property owners that would be expected to pay into a P-Bid, will be interested in, okay, is there going to be an encampment in front of my place? Is there going to be trash? Whatever. It's going to be the, the critical issue, and not issues that we care about around, around the well-being of the individuals. And so as we're look, as we're looking at those performance indicators, we just need, for our own purposes, in terms of trust and accountability on Measure E, and to maximize the likelihood that property owners will ultimately support a P-Bid, that we really stay focused on accomplishing those objectives, and that Downtown Streets focuses on accomplishing all their objectives. But our objectives are those two in particular, in order to, to max out the possibility for the P-Bid as well. I'm less worried about the geographic boundaries, because I know before a P-Bid would proceed, we would start with the notion of, within the P-Bid boundaries, you know, hey, who's interested? Right? And, and, you know, and if, and if there's not critical mass in Washington, we just wouldn't go there, for example. And if there's, if there's, and if we start to hear from other property owners in other parts of the city that they're really interested, then, you know, potentially even your maximum area boundary could, you know, could include the, you know, the Harbor, Harbor Central Center, or elsewhere in the city, if there was enough support and resources in order to support it. So I, I think we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but I really appreciate the work that's been done to put this together, and the P-Bid concept as a way to, to look at sustainability over, over the long run. And again, to thank Councilmember Orozco, and her, and her, her partner, that's, I think, in the back of the room, who has been equally a passionate advocate for the program as well, who has a request to speak, and we'll call her up in, in, in the appropriate time as well.
Okay.
So thanks, Mary. Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still remember that moment back in 2016, when I attended the State of the City, and I listened to, well, it was probably about two hours of the mayor addressing-
No, it was not.
-the people in the room. But one of the things that stuck out to me especially was when he talked about reducing the impacts of homelessness, and reducing homelessness, and he used examples that spoke directly to me, and those were examples that were repeated back to me when I knocked on doors and spoke to citizens in our community, and I asked, what are the top three things that are on your list of concerns that we need to address? Were I to be a council member, and on everybody's list, seemed to be homelessness. I, I am excited about the potential of this program. In 2014, we had an incredible example of what could be done by using an incredible model, Bridge to Housing, which provided housing as well as other services to, to impact and to affect homeless in our community, was a tremendous success. And, and I know that my colleagues, when they're asking these hard-nosed questions about data collection and outcomes, only have that in mind, because that's the information that we use when we're talking about how we are going to invest our money, and, and what was a good investment. So thank you to the council for asking those hard questions. I, I have all the confidence in the Downtown Streets team, as well as our Assistant City Manager and our Homeless Coordinator, that they're able, they will be able to address those concerns to our satisfaction. That said, I think with respect, I think the, the mayor's right. I think this one has a tremendous ability to impact the, to affect the impacts of homelessness. Just to frame the program a little bit for our community, many of whom might not know what we're even talking about, or might not completely understand based on, on our presentation, we all have the benefit of, of knowing. But the Downtown Streets team was created several years ago, and I, I had the opportunity, once I was elected, to, to take a day off from work and, and go down to San Jose, where I met Rachel Davidson, and attended one of the DST meetings. I, I don't think I, I really was prepared to receive what I received that day. And it's really hard to describe the feeling of being in a room with about 50 participants, many of whom had these shirts, and many that said Downtown Streets Team, and several others who wanted those shirts, and were willing to attend a two-hour-long meeting in order to get on a list to get one. What I learned that day was that this program was a beacon of hope for lots of people who hadn't had hope in their lives for a very long time. And they would come to these meetings religiously for the opportunity to be, for their number to be called, so that they could join a team, so they could work for a housing stipend or a gift card for, based on a number of hours that they, they would contribute. But, but in addition to that, there was a feeling amongst many members of, there's, there's an opportunity for them to share, that, that there was some upward mobility and some momentum. People were motivated to change their lives. They, they would share stories about how they were one week off their meds, or someone would share a story about how she had a job interview at Safeway, because someone approached her and said, what are you doing? And she said, I'm, I'm a part of Downtown Streets Team, and I am helping clean up in front of Safeway. But more importantly, when you ask people what the hardest part of being homeless is, and I, I've learned this through my experience with Rachel, it wasn't that they were sleeping in the cold necessarily, or that they went a little hungry. A lot of people reported that they were unseen, they were ignored, they were passed by. People would avoid them when they'd, they'd come into contact with them. And there were, there were anecdote after anecdote of people who were saying, you know, I'm recognized now, I have this shirt. People want to know who I am, because I am helping to beautify my community, and I'm a contributing member of my city. And so walking, driving away from that San Jose program, the, the thing that I carried away with me is that West Sacramento has a unique opportunity to be a part of this movement. And I'm cognizant of the fact that, you know, a work readiness program that offers some services isn't the end-all, be-all to address homelessness. If we had a magic pill for addressing homelessness and eradicating its impacts and its existence, we would, we would have done that already. But it's, it's a component, or a series of, of different components, that will at least be the stepping stone to progress. Ultimately, I, I do hope that we do entertain the conversations about our permanent supportive housing, but in the interim, if we can utilize the resources we have to address our community's concerns, and empower people to change their lives, show our community that we're actually listening, and we're trying to address the things that they go, they, they're thinking about when they're going to sleep at night, and, and really change the complexion of West Sacramento to its residents, I think we could improve and, and change so much in our city. So as you can tell, I have no shortage of enthusiasm, so much so that I went and met a city council member over at Sacramento and said, I think you need to partner with us and get this program going. And they said, all right. Well, they went and got the program. And so we have a wonderful pilot program in Sacramento. I've attended a couple of their meetings as well. It's, it's almost exactly the same as San Jose, and I would, if we do implement this program, I would encourage some of our community members to attend. I know Erin Laurel and Mark Sawyer attended with me in our March meeting, and walked away feeling, I think, probably pretty, pretty much the same as I did, which, which is fantastic. Finally, I just, I wanted to also mention that one of the members I spoke to in the San Jose program had mentioned that when she goes out into the community, and she's picking up hypodermic noodles, or needles, did I say noodles? Needles, hopefully, not noodles, that it was almost like a situation where people support what they help create, in that she would talk to some of her fellow homeless members of her community, and she'd say, hey, man, instead of dropping this here, could you drop, could you, could you put it away, where it's supposed to be put away? Because I'm the one that has to pick this up. I'm the one that's cleaning up after you. And it was one of those situations where people, the system started to support itself. So anyhow, I'm excited that Sacramento has a program, and I'm hopeful that if we were to be a, you know, a magnet, that people would be attracted to attending the Sacramento program, since it's open to receiving members. But I also look forward to the shirts in our community, and the beautification that would follow.
All right, now we have one request to speak on this. Thank you, Councilmember Orozco, and that's by Chelsea Revine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity for me to have a couple minutes to talk about Downtown, Downtown Streets Team. I live on the other side of the river, where they already started at the beginning of the year to, you know, help our homeless population and find real solutions, and I'm really proud of them. But I'm fortunate enough that, along with Councilmember Orozco, I learned about them probably a year and a half ago, and I've gotten to really get to know the program. I went to San Francisco with them, and spent the day picking up garbage with their team, and went to their meeting in San Francisco. I also went to the meeting in San Jose, and I've talked to dozens of their team members. And the thing that was so unique, as Councilmember Orozco mentioned, is the hope. And it's not the hope of one, one night with the roof over your head, or one more meal. It's- It's the hope that they get from the respect of people that they see when they're out there picking up garbage. And not just, you know, their fellow team members, but, you know, tourists walking by. It was Union Square, it was busy, there were lots of people out there, and other unsheltered people that weren't part of the team that respected them and said, hey, what are you doing? Asking about it, inquisitive. And it really rang true to me because, you know, homelessness is treated like a flickering light. It's like a nuisance or some, an annoyance in your day, but these are people. These are people that could be you or could be me. I know I was serving breakfast at Loews and Fishes a couple of months ago, and through the line comes a high school friend of mine. And who's to say where my life situation couldn't have made me be on the other side of that line, hoping for a couple of hard-boiled eggs and some warm oatmeal? Yeah, I don't know what his situation was. I've reached out to him, obviously. But it could be you, it could be me, it could be somebody that you know. And I would challenge you to spend an hour with their team. I know, you know, I've spent the day with them. You don't have to dedicate a day. You can dedicate an hour. Go across the river and see what they do and see it in real life. I know you guys are busy, but it could be quick. I know money is an issue, but I heard, you know, I spent ten years with law enforcement in my career, and hearing your officers and how they're struggling to be paid, $14,000 gets somebody off the street, and not off the street for a year, but off the street so your law enforcement isn't having to take care of them every year and go out and see them and clean up their camps. And we can be creative. I know that there's some companies that, you know, helped fund an off-ramp in Silicon Valley to help so that they could beautify people to come and visit whatever city it was. And there's ways to be creative about it. And as you know, Mr. Mayor, you have the eyes and the ears of the world, and you could really be a leader on this because every major city around the world that I've been to struggles with homelessness. And it's an opportunity for you guys, because of the size of West Sac, to really grab this issue and make it an issue about bringing people into your community. And it's not just getting them off the streets for their day, it's getting them real jobs, employment, and buy-in in your community, where then they'll be renting houses, they'll be getting jobs here, they'll be paying taxes, and they won't be a cost, they'll be a benefit. So, I hope you just, you know, take the time to really think about having them in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all the public comment. Is there any other question or debate? All right, then, Ms. Roscoe for a motion.
I'm so moved.
Oh, this is just a workshop.
Oh, it is, it is. So I'll take my moment back.
Mr. Laurel, do you have sufficient direction around, you clearly have the green light to go forward and negotiate, and you have sufficient direction as to the content of the negotiations?
Yes, we'll be back at a future meeting.
Great, terrific. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, on that note, I also failed to mention that I received an email yesterday from the League of California Cities, and I believe Ms. Davidson had mentioned that they are encouraging communities to replicate DST's innovative model in local neighborhoods. So, I am pleased to share that, and thank you again for the workshop.
Thank you. All right. Item 17 is a workshop on Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge Programs of the West Sacramento Home Run Initiative.
Good evening. My name's Ian Winbrot. I'm the Program Manager for the West Sacramento Home Run. During this workshop, staff will discuss potential program features and key performance indicators for the Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge Programs of the West Sacramento Home Run, as well as provide background for council discussion on STEPS and its potential alignment with the Career Ready Internship Program for the West Sacramento Home Run. Based on the successes and challenges from the initial year of implementing Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge Programs, staff devised the following suggested program features and key performance indicators to be included in the Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge Programs of the West Sacramento Home Run moving forward, including expansion of eligible students from exclusively high school seniors to juniors and seniors in the Career Ready Internship Program. Previously, as was established in the March 15 consideration of implementation actions for kids' home run, Career Ready Internships and Digital Badges were described as eligible for every internship-ready WUSD resident senior enrolled and making satisfactory progress in an integrated college and career pathway. As well as defining eligibility, staff recommends defining residency as being a resident of the city of West Sacramento. In addition, staff is recommending integrated college and career pathways be redefined as CTE pathways, meaning a sequence of two or more CTE courses within a particular industry, sector, or field of study that integrates core academic knowledge with technical and occupational knowledge designed to connect high school classes to college career certifications, excuse me, industry certifications and/or career. Staff also proposes that progress in a CTE pathway be defined as passing at least two CTE pathway courses prior to entering the paid internship. Additionally, staff recommends that there be no minimum number of hours or minimum number of weeks required for a Career Ready Internship Provider. Last, staff recommends that the West Sacramento Home Run should prioritize the creation of digital badges associated with paid internships and in-classroom CTE pathway curriculum. While I'm not going to describe each metric that describes our progress, I'll note that there's been modest success from pre-home run, the pre-home run pilot phase in 2015 to 2016, to the first-year implementation phase in 2016 to 2017, and that the second year implementation in 2017 to 2018 should see increased growth in the number of internship-ready CTE pathway students registered on LaunchPath, the CTE Pathway Internship Matching Platform, the number of internship hosting employers, the number of internship slots, the number of digital badges created, as well as the number of digital badges earned. Staff also wanted to provide counsel with background to inform discussion on STEPS and its potential alignment with the Career Ready Internship Program of the West Sacramento Home Run. As council may already be aware, STEPS is currently one of California's most successful public-sector internship programs based on the percentage of interns who become full-time hires as a result of the program. Approximately 10% of all interns from each of the three cohorts from 2015 to 2017 have become full-time employees with the city. Additionally, STEPS is currently one of California's longest and highest-paid public-sector internship programs based on duration, the number of hours per week, and the numbers per week of weeks of the program, as well as starting salary. In the STEPS program, we currently have no required minimum number of CTE pathway interns. And in 2017, when Measure E funds were available to cover the costs of a STEPS intern from a CTE pathway and grant funds were available to subsidize CTE pathway students participating in the Next Steps Program, only one CTE pathway student participated in the Summer Steps and the Next Steps Internship Program. In 2017, the city had 14 applications for the Summer Steps Program, which indicated that the applicant was in a CTE pathway. Overall, staff received 398 applications for the 2017 Summer Steps Program. City staff outreach to the Washington Unified School District and CTE pathway students included attending the Yolo High School and River City High School Career Fairs in April of 2017, and city staff emailed the Summer Steps announcement to River City and Yolo High School administrators. Future Ready conducted their own targeted CTE outreach to students, teachers, and administrators from April to June of 2017, and approximately 50 CTE pathway students were registered on LaunchPath in 2017. I should also mention that this year, the city manager's office is going to be splitting one STEPS intern between the city clerk's office and between the Home Run Initiative, and part of the workload of that STEPS intern is going to be backfilling the data from our high-quality preschool providers into the Pinwheel database, which is going to provide the foundation for the Home Run Initiative throughout each of the programs. Lastly, staff would like to recommend the following Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge key performance indicators for council's consideration. I'm available for any questions from council, and I'm joined tonight by Future Ready Executive Director Chris Warden, who can provide specific context through his organization's role as the Career Ready Internship and Digital Badge Program Administrator of the West Sacramento Home Run.
All right. Are there questions or comments?
I have one, which is, and it's a fundamental one. So I'm, depending what other comments that get made, I'm generally okay with most of the, with nearly all of the changes, except for one, and it's a huge disagreement. And that is on the, on number three, the redefinition of integrated college and career pathways to CTE pathways. In some senses, I was afraid that this, that this would happen, somebody would attempt to do this. I thought it might be in seven years from now, not this quickly, after the passage of the Home Run. The 1950s are over, the era when in which completion of any CTE pathway leads to employment. If it ever was true on a broad scale, it's definitely not true today, and it's not true in tomorrow's economy either. It is absolutely essential that every, every single person achieves some, some education behind, beyond high school, whether that's a university degree, a college degree, a college certificate, an apprenticeship. There's, there's really no, all the evidence says that even today, in advance of artificial intelligence and robots and everything else, that even today, everyone needs some form of post-secondary education after high school. And the biggest challenge in our city has not been access to college, it's been completion of college. So, we send a large number of students onto a community college, the majority of whom do not complete anything, not a degree, not a certificate, and they don't transfer. And the reason for that, in almost, in most cases, according to the research, is inadequate preparation. And so, the students arrive at the college and have to take remedial courses that then cause them to drop out entirely. And so, the most important signal that the Home Run can send from birth on is that you must be prepared. You got to prepare, you got, you got 17 years to prepare from birth to succeed at whatever amount or level of post-secondary education that you want to pursue. So, the notion of integrated college and career pathways was to make that very clear, that the internships are, that the city is supporting through Measure E is for integrated college and career pathways that prepare, help to prepare a high school student for both college and career, not the statement here, which is, let's see, for college, industry certs, and/or career. And the/or career is definitely a 1970s conception of this framing. And in fact, the State Board of Education won't use CTE pathways as an indicator of career readiness because there's, the evidence does not show that young people who complete a CTE pathway all by itself only are more likely to achieve, you know, a family-supporting career over an extended period of time. So, an integrated pathway does both things, and there are lots of them in the world, and there are tens of thousands of them in California and some in our district, but in which you, a student completes both two CTE courses, or sometimes three or four, and completes a program of collegiate preparation. So, whether that's the A to G admission course requirements for UC and CSU, whether it's a dual enrollment program at a community college where they might earn, you know, 60 units or a degree or something, but some mechanism of, that demonstrates college readiness, the readiness to succeed and actually complete the degree once they have access to college. So, this issue, this issue of switching to simply a CTE pathway, I think is just not adequate for accomplishing really what is one of the central goals of the Home Run, which is to make real the promise of education so that a young person in West Sacramento has the best chance possible of achieving the level of education and training that they need in order to be competitive and enjoy a prosperous life right here in the community when they graduate. So, that one area, I understand the issues around the progress of the district in developing more and more pathways. That's, that's issue, but we knew that when we started. And in fact, when we, when we launched Measure E in the Home Run, part of the purpose was just, was to put up a beacon to say, hey, school district, but hey, teachers and young people and industry partners, if you collaborate to develop high-quality integrated college and career pathways, one of the benefits of that will be that your, that your students will be eligible for these, for guaranteed paid internships. And to the extent that that's happening more slowly than we, than we might have liked or anticipated, or that the district has, would have liked or anticipated, that's the reality. But to loosen the standards down to just the CTE courses, I think is the wrong policy solution to try to, to try to advance that. And we knew this was going to be an issue. And we were trying, we've been, the purpose of this program is to try to increase the level of integrated college and career pathways, and I feel like this proposal instead kind of gives up on that proposition in search of focusing just on CTE. So, that, with that one exception, I'm supportive of the remainder of the, of the staff recommendation, but I think that, to me, that's a fundamental, a fundamental challenge in this, in this space, especially because of the college promise portion of the Home Run. We are saying to every young person in the city, go to college and we, and you don't have to worry about paying for college, but you will pay if you don't graduate, right? If you don't finish college, you've spent your time, your other costs besides just tuition, and that's a false promise if we're not ensuring through the rest of the Home Run that you're going to be prepared to succeed.
Other comments? Councilmember Sandin.
I have a clarifying question for you, then. Under that section, the program features, then the key performance indicators are all about the number of CTE pathway students and interns? Does that mean, does that change on page three? I'm just trying to understand what we're...
Yeah.
Part of this is a nomenclature question, and so I hear the mayor's comments about the definition of the CTE pathway. As part of the marketing and branding efforts, which will be completed by next week, the school district kind of encompasses all of their pathways, whether they're academies or whether they're Project Lead the Way, or whether they're integrated or not as a CTE pathway. So, I understand about being able to change the definition to be representative of what the council's overarching policy priorities and outcomes for the Home Run Initiative CTE pathways are just in reference to what the council has previously called integrated college and career pathways at River City High School.
So, it's synonymous with that? Is that what you're trying to tell us, is that what we're articulating in terms of what the expected outcomes are don't match up quite to the definition of what the school district has, and you're trying to bridge that gap a little bit? Is that...
Correct. I'm using the term CTE pathway and integrated college and career pathway. However, now understanding the comments by council for the definition of an integrated college and career pathway, that will change. However, the goal of increasing the number of integrated college and career pathways, I would say, still remains the same.
Yeah, because the existing, the CTE pathways at River City are not all college and, integrated college and career.
That's correct.
So, I think it's, it would be confusing to use the same word, the same term, but have it defined differently. Whereas, I think an integrated college and career pathway is, is a CTE pathway that is also preparatory for, for, for post-secondary education of some form. And that could be, I mean, you know, the obvious one and the most popular one in the state and in the region is A to G completion, but it doesn't have to be that, right? We have, the, the district has the early college charter high school, in which students take a certain number of, of college units directly from the college, not AP classes, but direct college courses. And completion of a certain number of college courses is a very strong predictor of college success as well. It's just as good as A to G. So, that's, that's another example. Or it could be that there's a program that is specifically preparatory for apprenticeships, for example, that is post-secondary education, but that, but by completing that program, you are deemed eligible to start an apprenticeship program. So, it's not, it doesn't have to be, it's not a religious issue about being preparatory. You know, you have to be ready to go to Berkeley. That's not what it is. Not, not every single student is going to want to go to the university, but the definition needs to include both the CTE pathway component, where the two courses in the CTE pathway, plus, plus, you know, one, an acceptable measure of college, college readiness and/or eligibility, of which we have several, of which there are several possibilities. And the vast majority of state-funded CTE pathways now are integrated college and career pathways. We have some, some legacy pathways in the district that are, that hopefully will still evolve, and if we keep sending the proper signals that we're going to support that, along with industry partners, it will, it will broaden the number of CTE pathways, so... I'm sorry, did you have a... No. First, Ian, thanks for bringing this back, and this is the kind of check-ins we need to have, but tell me a little bit about where maybe the challenges, are you seeing challenges with the private sector partners and understanding, I mean, I know we're working with, you list them here, or just the, just the companies who are working with them, internships. Are there challenges we're facing from accepting the internships and/or, and can you articulate a little bit around what you're seeing and how that's translating to this issue we're dealing with?
Sure, and it's a little bit of a chicken-and-egg problem.
Right.
Like, once the integrated college and career pathways become strengthened, that'll sign signals to industry that youth are better prepared for industry-specific careers. However, at the same time, you know, by holding fast to our definition, that'll reduce the pool, the applicant pool of students within specific pathways, because certain ones that don't fit that definition won't be eligible for those internships. And certain employers, you know, might not see that, you know, because you're taking an integrated college and career pathway, you're not just prepared for, you know, let's say, a robot, a position at a robotics firm, if you're in the robotics pathway, or they might not see the parallel between engineering, the engineering design pathway and geotechnical engineering, or the engineering design pathway and civil engineering. It's, you know, these pathways provide a jumping-off point, and the research backs this up, for youth to gain specific skills in an industry sector, even though if it's not a... not a one-to-one match. So I would say that's been the biggest struggle at this point, is that employers see that there are not a one-to-one match for their industry sector through the specific pathway, so they see that those students wouldn't be able to add value to the bottom line of their...
Yeah. And I think that's where I'm, I'm kind of understanding, kind of a reissue, is that we're not connecting the intent of the program or goals of the program and how it could, it could help them. And because at the end of the day, I think about the, what we are trying to do, at least in my view, is, is to create a system of city services that helps elevate a workforce of the future, right? That's kind of what this is. And, and my view, we're trying to, I mean, at least I have been hearing over the last few weeks, private sector businesses that are articulating the severe lack or shortage of work readiness, folks around the country, just that kids aren't ready. And I, I, I do believe, I do believe in the program, and I do believe what we're trying to do here is create an environment that's unique in a city, that provides a pathway for kids to get the necessary education opportunities, if, and encourage them to stay in school so they can be ready. And it's, it's, this is a little bit, I can see that as chicken and the egg prospect you're, you're, you're kind of dealing with on, I think both fronts, and Future Ready, I think is out there as well, trying to talk to employers about this. And I don't know if it's part of the branding initiative or how we can get the point across. It's very hard, because it's, we're, we're in infant stage of, of this program, and making sure how we can quickly get to them the value that these kids could provide long-term, not necessarily, you know, I think most employers are looking for, I need somebody in here who is going to know how to do this, and then stick around for months or years afterward, kind of in a typical apprenticeship-type relationship that maybe is, is a model of the past versus you're bringing somebody in, you're teaching them specific skills that are within that industry, that can translate and be used on educational opportunities that could further their career down the path, right? So again, I, I don't know, maybe the branding might help with that? I don't know what the outcomes of that are, other than getting the word out about the program. But is that one of the components that would help bridge that gap?
Right. Not just redefining what a integrated college and career pathway is, but also redefining an internship, you know, whether it's Wallace School and Associates, or whether it's our own Public Works Department where we've had a CTE pathway intern for the past two years now become a contributing member of that, or, excuse me, she's in a division, that division's portfolio of work, the Traffic and Transportation Division, those narratives can help drive a deeper understanding, rather than talking about the research base, but talking about these anecdotal stories about...
Yeah, because, yeah, to, to an employer who's dealing every day with, you know, making payroll, and they're trying to get further their new product, or the research on their product, or whatever they're doing, it's going to, we're going to have to connect them with that more so than, you know, kind of maybe the language we've been using. So I'm interested to see how that, how that can impact this, because I think that's what you're trying to get at, is the definition may not quite fit kind of everyone's idea of what an internship should be, so.
Councilmember Sandin. Oh, I thought you were... All right. Okay, we did have one request for public comment, so we'll move there next. That's by Pat Lint.
Well, I'm trying to understand these programs. Number one, I'm saddened, because when I left the board, the new high school was supposed to be set up in career pathway-type programs, and it became a comprehensive high school. I have a real problem with the city conducting school educational business when the board probably doesn't even understand what the pathways program is. You're putting money down a rat hole if it's not going to be successful. I would love for it to be successful for children. And I believe in the smaller learning environments and, and career pathways, or whatever program you want to call it. I understand it a little bit better after hearing the presentation. I just think that the school district's not ready and prepared to put this into effect at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So just to return, that was the only public comment on this item. I do want to acknowledge Chris Warden, who's been crushing this work, and along with, with Mr. Winbrook, with all the partners and with all the companies, and also to acknowledge, I mean, the companies who've been, been really active with this, with this work from, from the beginning, returning, you know, repeatedly, or, or spreading the word about, about, about what, what these interns really mean, because in, in the end, a lot of this is really company to company. People saying, yeah, no, I didn't want to do this either, but it's, it's not so bad. And then, oh, it's not, it's not so bad, it's actually, it's pretty good. Now I went, I'm hiring, this, I couldn't live without this program. So it is a process, and I know we want to, we want, the, at the beginning, we're like, we want everybody in, and, and we've got to get it right, I think, and I appreciate the, all the, all the work that's been, been done in order to accomplish that. We're seeing that at every point, at every single level of Measure E. Well, okay, could we, could we go to, you know, quality standard one in preschool? Because so we can make sure everybody's in, and, and that's going to be the challenge for this whole project, which is a continuum of initiatives. It's not five programs that are all standalone, that all, whatever, they are all linked together with the objective of, of, of preparing every young person in this community for, for economic and community success, and to take advantage of the great jobs that are here in this city that are many, as you said, Mayor Perdambla Desma, a lot of jobs, good jobs with great benefits and futures are, are going unfilled, or at least unfilled by our own residents. So that's the goal, and it's the reason for the integrated curriculum, a continuum all the way through to, to the end. And so I, I know what the challenge is, you know, working with both of you on how much easier it would be if we would relax some of these standards, but also that we, that, you know, we're setting, we're setting the, the template for the weight-going future and the, the future going ahead. And I, the school district is an important partner in this work, and, and individual teachers are very important partners, because they are the ones that lead the pathways, and also the district administration and Renee Collins, the CTE director, and others in the district who have, who really have kind of stepped out of, out of the, out of the norm in order to try to find new, find new resources, which they have, and, and create new, and expand programs. So they've been, they have been a great partner, a terrific partner in this work. It isn't simple, right? I mean, it just, just a couple of weeks ago, we sat down with Sutter, the CEO of Sutter's Davis facility came to City Hall to talk about things that they could do in the community. One of the issues was around workforce development, and they're very interested in working here, and they're, they're challenged with exactly how to place interns, given some of their HIPAA and liability issues, but they want to do something. And they want to, they're, they're interested in working with the school, with River City and with others in the community on creating some, some integrated college and career health pathways. But it takes time, right? And Measure E is not two years old. And so it takes time for that, for that work to seed, and for teachers and students and for programs to get, to get mounted. And fortunately, I think that's coming with the, with the right, with the right business partners and the school district's active leadership and the partners of, with some of the post-secondary institutions, and then just really outstanding work at the staff level and with, with Chris at Future Ready. So I, I, and I appreciate you coming back with, with the level of detail. Level of detail that you do each time about some of the, the tweaks and adjustments that need to get made in order to maximize and optimize the effectiveness of the program, and how we're actually doing compared to our aspiration, because we want to get the standards right, we also, also need to get the reality to match up.
Right. If I can make a, another comment, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I know, I realize the challenge that this is, and as the mayor pointed out, this is an easy work, and convincing an employer to take a student, can, you know, working with teachers to get the, the students to apply, all those things are difficult. And, you know, this is our program. We had this in mind, and we passed E back in, was that 2016? 2016, yeah, thank you, losing track of time. 2016, we had this in mind, we're committed to it. So I, I just offer the message, Mr. Winbrook and, and Chris, you're not alone in this. You know, don't feel like you're out there alone. I know, Chris, you invited me to coffee, discuss some ideas you've had. It's been a while since we've caught up. You should have a group of stakeholders or people in the community you can pull to and, and bounce the challenges and the successes off of as well, because I think everyone would like to see this work. The outcome of this could be, it, it, it isn't, excuse me, it isn't like any other thing we would do as a city. It isn't, you know, we have the best parks and, you know, playgrounds. It isn't, we have the other things we do as a city. This is, our kids have the opportunity to have success in their careers and their lives in their community. That's the outcome we're after. And, and so I don't want you to feel like you're out there alone, and as a council, we're just giving you this one-time advice. You should be calling us and asking us to gather other folks and say, how can we get the message across better? How can, what, what more can we do? That's part of our role here, too. And don't be shy to ask, because we're all in this to make it work. And I know the school district is, too, they're trying to find how they can best connect it with it, too. So I just offer that up as well.
Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you. And my only addition to everything that's been said is, I did take note of the paragraph talking about kind of the city taking on interns as well and stepping up in that role. So I, and I noticed that also in, in your report, so I, I would encourage us to kind of walk the talk with this, since it is, as Mayor Perdambla Desma said, is our program.
I completely agree, and it's one of the things, I'm, I'm really proud of this organization and the city manager and the Human Resources Division and all of the departments who have, I mean, the, you know, we've been talking about League of Cities Recognition, but this is one of the, you know, one of the best practices, the city's internship program that is obviously connected to the, to this work in the Home Run. But the city's internship program is a, is a, is a model in the state, it's, it's been celebrated in the region, at ACOG last month as well, is one of the best practices, and it's because, it's because it's well-designed, it's well-operated, it's, it's got a strong vision, strong staff support, and then in the, in the individual departments, I mean, you can see when the students come and then when they, when they're ready to leave, the, the level of enthusiasm and support and genuine care and mentorship that the staff in each of the departments devote to these young people, both because they care about the young people, but because they all are, as we heard from Public Works and we've heard from other, you know, I think economic development is the same thing, you know, that, that they're, they're, they're both doing it because they care about young people in our city and because they want the most talented people that are out there. And it turns out, we have quite a few talented young people who just need a chance. And, and so our staff and through the STEPS program has really done an exemplary job in, in making that dream possible. And so part of what we can do better also is to, you know, for other employers to say, hey, give, 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 you know, give Aaron or Charlene or the chief or Cindy or Danix a call, and, and, you know, they'll tell you what this is, what this, what this is like, and what that's meant in their departments, in addition to the support that Mayor Perdambla Desma talked about from us as well. So Ms. Roscoe?
Uh, thank you. You know, this, I wasn't going to actually comment, but the discussion reminds me of a, a situation that I faced at least over a decade ago, when I was doing fieldwork on the Navajo Reservation. And we were called in to analyze the Navajo Community College to talk about the future of that institution as it relates to the Navajo students there. Specifically, the, the reservation was, was in either a seventy-two or seventy-six percent unemployment rate. They had the college there, but it wasn't really turning out, I guess there was a philosophical discussion about whether or not the, the education to be, should be geared toward cultural and language, language preservation versus turning out the next rocket scientist who would be equipped to go out, outside the reservation, or even on the reservation, to utilize that, that education. Unfortunately, you know, the, the reservation itself didn't have opportunities to provide for any graduates once they did matriculate. So a lot of, a lot of kids were leaving, and they were going to institutions outside to get the real-world education. And in a way, I mean, it's not apples to apples, but West Sacramento's come a long way. And as much as I'd like to say we're not prepared, I, I don't like that. That doesn't sit well with me, because that means that we're just going to submit to the norm, which is what we've always known, but rather than challenge ourselves to try things that are unknown and that are hard, because we don't have all the answers, we're seeking them now. But, you know, Mr. Mayor, you just said there's talented people that just need a chance. And, you know, our kids are those, those people that need a chance, so we need to find a way to provide it. I think what I, I, I think what Councilmember Sandin and the rest of my, my fellow council members said, you know, is we, we need to entice employers to invest in the children here to promote their ultimate success, because we ultimately don't want them to leave West Sacramento, we want them to be right here, leading our businesses and reinvesting like their fathers and, and their teachers who, who live here and, and put their resources here as well. It's just, what I, I, I am getting somewhere here. The, the, one concern that I had, and Councilmember Sandin mentioned it also, is that if we're, we want to walk the walk and talk the talk, do we have enough slots for, say, Future Ready interns versus summer step interns? Because I know a lot of people want to be accommodated, but as a person who takes interns in my office from time to time, I know that when I'm getting the college-level interns, they're going to do a lot more for me, even the law school interns are going to do a lot for me than just the high schoolers. So how can we make sure that our high schoolers are providing that benefit back?
Yep. Ms., I know, you know, at Future Ready, Chris is, is working with partners and inventing rubrics and finding to, all kinds of tools to do exactly that, because it, it kind of gets back to this, this question. Yes, we want to maximize the number of students have access to internships, but we also need to make sure it's, it's in some sense more important at this stage to make sure that, that when they get placed and employers are like, this was a good experience, right? I want, I want more of this. And so it's really critical that, that, you know, that this, that the criteria that are in, are here, and that the work that Future Ready's doing around, around, you know, kind of pre-internship career readiness, you know, simple things about how to dress, you know, showing up, you know, showing up on time, but the full range of, of those kind of career readiness skills are really important. And, and so we probably will never be at a point where 100% of the students are getting placed in internships. But, but it is, it is important that we get it right at the beginning and, and make sure that we're, we're, we're having, we're, we're giving the right experience to the employer as well as to the, as well as to the internship, because the, the number one reason why they will drop out is a bad experience, and so we have to, we just have to get that, that drilled in. I mean, we've talked about all the challenges, but I do want to also acknowledge that between the city and Future Ready and the work that's going on and the, and the employers that are doing this, I mean, it is hard work, but, and Sacramento has the Thousand Strong Initiative going on across the river, and there are a dozen other cities around the country that are attempting to do a similar sort of internship commitment, and none of them is farther along than we are. I mean, you know, per capita, Thousand Strong is not farther along than, than we are either. And so although, you know, we should feel like, okay, we recognize the challenges that are ahead, we're not, we're, we're getting this, this work done, we're building the right, the right, the right, the right track record, the right tools, the externships with teachers, the internship, you know, guides, all the things that are necessary in order to succeed. The team of people that are working on it are really accomplishing that, and I want to, I want to acknowledge that. And I feel like, as we're walking out of here, gosh, this is, it's so hard, it's so, it's so hard to do this work. It is, but it's also really important, and we are making some real significant progress, and, and it's making a difference in, in young people's lives. Mr. Johanneson?
Yeah, maybe just a quick question, just on the conceptual basis of this program. So I think we're, as the kids go through the process of going through school and making certain assurances that they're going to continue with the program in exchange for the promise of, of the education, is there a choice point, a career path choice point that the kids are, are making earlier under this program? Because it seems it's more kind of like a European model where you're, you know, you kind of choose your career earlier in your education in high school, for example, versus, I think what has gone on here is that you get out of high school, you go to junior college, you go to college, you, you don't even know what you're going to do at that point, you know, and then you start developing at that point. So is that, is that kind of what this is doing, is like focusing the kids? And if it is, you know, does that, I don't know if there's enough track history yet to see whether or not, you know, kids regret the choice? to see whether or not, you know, kids regret the choice? For example, if they're in engineering and they say, "Gee, I don't like that, I don't like, like the internship," and they go in a different direction? It may more be just a theoretical question on this program.
No, it's, it's real. I mean, the, it is the case generally that today's, today's young people are more career-aware, more career-minded, and have a set of goals that are more clearly defined than at least when I went to high school and college. Where the norm was, yeah, I'm going to college, and I will take a bunch of classes in my freshman and sophomore year, and start to get, start to figure out what I might want to do. That's just, that's not an, most young people today don't, are not thinking that way. They are, they are, they are having objectives that are, that are, that are changeable, though, right? So that they want to try, but they want to focus on the trying as they go along. So these pathways are an opportunity to do that, and to discover, before you enroll in a really expensive nursing or engineering program, "I don't like nursing or engineering." So that's, that's a part of it. And part of it is it's an opportunity to learn the career skills that are transferable. But in order to focus that, that's necessary. So I want to say, in several of these career pathways, the majority, the majority of students end up choosing majors outside of that field, when they go on to college or certificate programs. A lot stay in them, but a majority do move on. So they're, they're not constraining, in part because eighth graders and ninth graders are choosing, they're making choices based on a whole lot of things, not just workforce investment board data. Right? So, you know, "My girlfriend is in that program, so I'm going to be in it, too." Right? So, so by design, these programs tend to be permeable, more so than the European programs. And by having the college readiness component, you're not locking yourself in. This is one, another reason why the integration is so important.
And anecdotally, we know, Councilmember Johansson, that some youth are taking multiple pathways, and that even last year, Chris shared with me a story of an intern who had an internship with the Washington Unified Food Service Division, and realized that that's not what they wanted to do for the rest of their career. So I think those types of experiences are just as valuable as learning that, you know, the geotechnical engineering intern, or the youth here in the Traffic and Transportation Division, she thought she wanted to be a civil engineer, now she wants to be a traffic and transportation engineer. Like, the context, the learned experience in the classroom can translate to your out-of-classroom work experience, but it doesn't need to be rigid. In the past, councils talked about pathways being more porous, so you can move in and out of them with your interests and as you progress through.
Thank you. All right, do you have sufficient direction?
I do.
All right, thank you. Brings us, and thank you, Mr. Warden. All right, that brings us to council calendar. Mr. Tuttle?
Yes, Amanda's on vacation, so I'll do the best to kind of highlight the upcoming week. So as you know, Cap to Cap is Saturday, the 14th through the 18th, and many of you are going. The draft leave behind is there. It's similar to what we've used in the past years. It's got flood, streetcar, and the port. Probably the key item is that work program money with the core. So Greg Faven will be back in Washington with you if you need technical expertise. A couple other items on the calendar. The chief, the fire department's having its badge pending on Wednesday, so when you get back from Cap to Cap at 5:00 o'clock, that's here in the Galleria. The Riverfront JPA meeting was canceled. That was for Thursday, but that's been canceled. And then we have Earth Day here at City Hall, Saturday, the 21st, at 10:00 a.m.
Questions on the calendar? City Attorney Report.
Just briefly, Mayor, you mentioned the tax reform bill that was passed earlier the year. Thank you for your help with Aaron and the Economic Development Staff, and Amy Brown on getting the opportunity zones established here in West Sacramento. So now we're going to be watching IRS develop the guidelines for that, so that hopefully, as that process gets done, we can come back and say, "This is how this makes sense for West Sacramento." And then also, thanks for the kudos on summer steps. The, each department will have two interns this year. If they want more, they can pay for it, but they'll be too authorized. We anticipate a big response to that. We're already getting calls. It's got a good word of mouth in the city, so kids are asking about when does it get announced, and that's Monday. So the applications will be available, and people can apply on Monday.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to send more kudos to the city manager and our Public Works Department, and Parks and Rec. Bright Park, or, excuse me, Bright Community Church is doing a community cleanup day, what they call the Serve Day on the 21st, and they reached out to ask if the city would be interested in partnering with them. But I'm really pleased to hear that our city is actually supporting the cleanup efforts by providing trash bags and other support. And that's fantastic, especially considering it's Earth Day, and we wanted to give back. And I appreciate our city always being supportive of the efforts of our members of the community. So thank you.
All right, City Attorney Report. Back direction for members of the council. So Mr. Johansson moves, and Ms. Sandin seconds. Let the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.